It's now six thirty and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask that all rise and join me in invocation to begin by Pastor Antoine Slaughter with Victorious Life Ministries. Mr. Slaughter actually works for Henry County in the Facility Maintenance Department, so we thank you for coming out. And after the invocation, if you'd please remain for the pledge.
Amen. Let us bow our heads. Father God, we thank you today, Lord God. We come acknowledging that you are God. And we thank you for all your good gifts. And we thank you for your many blessings. Father, we thank you for the board members that are here today and all the leadership that is in this place, Father God. And we pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, guidance, and the courage, Father God, to make all the right decisions for this county. Father, we also pray, Lord God, that the grace and the leading of your Holy Spirit will be in this meeting today. And we pray that your will will be done today in this meeting for this county. And we thank you in the name of Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Call for a motion to accept the agenda as published or make any amendments.
Chair, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda, please, that we would recognize the Georgia Elite Football Association here tonight.
All right. That amendment being made. Like to call for a motion to accept the agenda. The amended agenda.
Sumo.
Motion by the Fifth District.
Second.
Second by Third. All in favor? This time, we're gonna have Melissa come forward and do a proclamation to the Georgia
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we have a certificate of achievement for the Georgia Elite Football Team. And we're joined by Tyronn Williams, who is the founder of this organization. And the certificate of achievement reads, "This certificate is awarded to Georgia Elite Football Team with the Georgia Elite Sports Academy in recognition of the Georgia Elite Football Team for their outstanding commitment in participating in the Pro Bowl NFL Flag National Championships and proudly representing the Atlanta Falcons on January twenty-sixth through thirtieth, two thousand seventeen." And Mr. Williams has a few words he'd like to tell about the team.
Thank you all so much for having us here this evening. I would like to thank all the Commissioners, especially Commissioner Dee Clemmons. She's been absolutely incredible as it relates to our plight to have a home here in Henry County. I've been in front of this board a few times over the years, and it's so good to be in front of the board right now, celebrating these young men and their achievement. They all are gonna come up in a few moments and their parents. Georgia Elite is an organization that focuses on academics and community service, and we use football and all the other sports that we do to get the kids interested in being a part of the organization, then we make sure that we nourish that whole child. And that's what we're all about. Great news for Henry County, the Atlanta Falcons, which has been our partner since we started out the blank, gave us a grant to start our program, has made a decision to have their first-ever NFL flag tournament for the Southeast Region here in McDonough and Henry County on May the twentieth. And as you see, they're planning on having some players down, the cheerleaders, some of the Falcons brass. So it's gonna be an absolutely incredible weekend over at Avalon Park. And so I just wanna make sure we invite all of Henry County out to that particular park in District Two, okay? So thank you so much for all you all have done for us, and we appreciate this day.
Thank you for having us. We're gonna go ahead and take a picture with them at this time.
Okay. I'll just move over back, put in the steps. He gets in front of me. You come in. Off to that. It's on the other side too, Phil. Back up. I'll take it this way. Yeah, I'm... I'll take it this way. I'll look this way. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Good job, guys. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay. You look this way. Take a couple. One, three. One, two, three. Four. Okay.
All right, next, we're gonna have... Melissa's got a proclamation for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And to receive that is gonna be the Southern Crescent Sexual Assault and Child Advocacy Center in Hampton. Melissa.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Prevention Month. Whereas, in an effort to bring awareness and support across the country, state, and county, April is recognized as Sexual Assault Prevention Month. And whereas, sexual abuse impacts and affects men, women, and children in our community and around the world, with studies showing that one in five women and one in seventy-one men will be brutally assaulted at some point in their lives. And whereas, young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and on campuses, one in five women and one in sixteen men are assaulted during their time in college. And whereas, precautionary measures must be established and supported to protect the victims of this abuse and prevent violence through advocacy, prevention, intervention, and education. And whereas, Henry County stands with organizations such as the Southern Crescent Sexual Assault and Child Advocacy Center in their outreach and supporting programs to help establish a supportive community by working together to strengthen the lives impacted by this abuse. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of April is designated as Sexual Assault Prevention Month in Henry County, and we encourage all citizens to support programs and initiatives that work to prevent assault and abuse and focus on making a positive difference in our community. This eighteenth day of April, two thousand seventeen, signed by Vice Chair Blake Prince, attested by Stephanie Braun, County Clerk.
Thank you, Melissa. Next on the agenda is a resolution approving support of an additional judge to the Flint Judicial Circuit. The presenter's gonna be Honorable Arch W. McGarrett, Superior Court Judge. Mr. McGarrett?
I'm left-handed. That works for me.
Awesome.
Well, let me introduce some other people who are here in support of this. Judge Brian Amero, Judge Crumley. I would've done Judge Crumley. He just got here just in time. I would've introduced him first. But Judge Amero does, in addition to all the other matters that we deal with, the accountability courts, which includes the Drug Court, Parental Accountability Court, and Henry County Resource Court. We have also Darius Patillo, our District Attorney, and Barbara Harrison, our Clerk of Superior Court, and Will Simmons, who is the Sixth District Court Administrator. I'll explain that in detail anytime y'all want. He does a lot more than Henry County. He's in a lot of counties. First, I wanna give you some history. This is... The process for getting an additional judgeship approved obviously has to go through the House and the Senate, has to be signed off by the Governor. But there's a process before you even get to that starting spot. And the starting spot is the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court will send a letter to every circuit in the state to the chief judges. I am the Chief Judge of the Henry County Superior Court, which is the Flint Circuit, it's the one-county circuit, asking if we do want a third, a fourth judgeship study or another judgeship study or a circuit split, 'cause there's a circuit study split also, but they're expensive. So essentially, they ask, and then we have to answer back or just ignore it. And so we ignore it when we don't have support. We answer back in the affirmative when we have support. Essentially, that study is conducted and reported back to the Judicial Council, which is the governing body that the Superior Court has along with the other courts. The Chief Justice of the Supreme Court and the Presiding Justice, two Court of Appeals Judges, the Chief Judge of the Court of Appeals and Presiding Judge, the officers, two officers from the Council Superior Court Judges, and the two, a elected representative that comes from the six, each district in the state. There are ten districts of judges, and there's a District Court Judge, which Judge Amero, I believe you do that now. And so they would be... In the entire body, the Juvenile Court, Probate Court, all have representation, municipal courts, and I'm sure I'll leave somebody out, magistrate courts, you name it, they have a body on there. They report to that Judicial Council. First, they report those who are qualified. The qualifications are based on a program that has been in place now about six years. They changed the rules. Will Simmons can add any information about that. He's on the committee that did all the change. We were previously qualified, received a recommendation. We were fourth in line. They were only gonna approve three that year, so we waited till the next year when we moved up to number three. We got approved. We submitted our bill. This was back in two thousand eight to go to the two thousand nine legislature. Based on the political situation at the time, we were not going to get our bill approved. We were not gonna get it passed. I'll go into that detail with somebody else some other time. Essentially, it didn't happen. And then the recession hit, and we survived that, as y'all who are here, those who lived here know. We're still trying to dig out of that hole. Essentially, however, the population has begun to bounce back in Henry County, along with that, the crime that always follows the people. And so we are asking, in the event this letter does come, which I know it will, that I'll be able to respond in the affirmative that we do need a fourth Superior Court Judge. Now, in your executive summary, you should have most of the information that I'm gonna refer to. We currently have three. We have had three Superior Court Judges since January one of two thousand six. This last eleven years, the population per judge in Flint Circuit, which is Henry County, has increased from sixty-one thousand five hundred per judge to seventy-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. That's the fifth highest in the state. The population is continuing to grow right at two-point-three percent, which is a healthy rate, but a lot better than when it was going at five and six percent. I think we can deal with it better in the county. As the county becomes more urban, we are noticing the nature of the crimes we're dealing with in the criminal element. There's more to what we do than just criminal work. But the murders, the multiple murders, armed robberies, gang-related crimes, we have one apartment complex that have... I have presided over one murder trial, got two more coming. And that's just one apartment complex. So that's something that I wish I could shut that one down, but I don't have that authority. But business growth, again, what we have... Y'all have tried to do is encourage business growth to help our tax base, other than the homes. That generates litigation because people have workman's comp claims that could eventually end up in court and have, when they appeal the outcome, they don't like the results sometimes. We have also had business litigation between businesses, customers, and things of that nature. That has always increased as the businesses increase. Several case filings, thirteen sixty-nine per judge, that's one thousand three hundred sixty-nine, which is above the state average of twelve-hundred per judge, fourteen percent higher than that. All of these take time to resolve. And I have already covered the previous history of the recommendation for an additional judge. I did give you on page two the continued background. Piedmont was ranked... Piedmont Judicial Circuit in two thousand thirteen was ranked number one. They got a new judge. Ranked three was the Clayton Judicial Circuit. They got a new judge. They were ranked five. Northeastern Judicial Circuit, they've gotten a new judge. I think that one just went in this year. Hasn't been foreign in yet. Western Judicial Circuit in two thousand sixteen was ranked nine, and the Appalachian Circuit in two thousand sixteen. All of these were ranked either just ahead of us or behind us, and they have already received the extra judge they needed, even though the budget for the state is always a challenge. We are simply asking for your approval to seek the study to be done. It is a... What they do is they... We come up with a criteria, the judges do, and that has changed since two thousand eight when we were previously approved, to the detriment of single-county urban circuits. Rural circuits where you travel forty-five minutes to get to your court and may have eight counties, as many as eight, to deal with. That has received a little bit of a boost. They have an easier time of getting another judge because of the time they spend on the road and the number of prisons that are located in those areas. There are also the Atlanta areas where you had single-county circuits, which are all urban and not suburban. When you talk about DeKalb County, Fulton County, the Atlanta Circuit, you talk about Cobb County, Gwinnett County, those are distinct areas where they have huge populations and are oftentimes in need. But they also have a bigger tax base from the local support that they receive. When I get calls sometimes from judges in other areas, they say, "Can I speak to... I need to talk to your calendar clerk." I thought I don't have one of those. And I don't have a pro se litigant assistant. I don't have that. We don't have a family law center that helps the pro se litigants do things. We end up having to do most of that. We are getting help from our local lawyers, by the way. But anyway, that is why we're here. If you have specific questions, like I said, Will Simmons has experience in the makeup of the study and what they do. Judge Amero can tell you about how it impacts his court, 'cause... And this isn't about me. I'm planning on retiring at some point. I ran my last election, I can assure you of that. And I hope my wife's watching, so she'll believe me now that I'm not gonna run again. Anyway, I'll be glad to answer any questions. If I can't, we'll defer to those who are here in support.
All right. Thank you, Judge McGarrett. Do any of the Commissioners have a question for the judge? All right. Well, this time, I'm gonna call for a motion. Motion from the Fifth District?
Second.
Second, Third. All in favor?
Thank you very much. There's a resolution for signature, and I'm sure I'll get a copy of it, and I will take the next step, which is, once I receive the Chief Justice letter, I will contact the various cities, Chamber of Commerce, Henry County Bar has already said they would write a letter. The cities, obviously, they don't have a dog in the fight, but they always support me when I ask for their support. Gary Barron, he's been in the city, worked in the city, he knows all about that. But we appreciate your support tonight. I won't hold anybody else up. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Next, we have on the agenda is Community Development. Resolution authorizing the Henry County Purchasing Department to process change orders to purchase orders for the CDBG program up to the twenty-five percent authorized as administrative amendments in the Citizens Participation Plan. Shannon Señio is going to be presenting this. Thank you, Shannon.
Yes. Good evening, Board. The Community Development Department is requesting to authorize that the purchasing department may be able to process change orders to purchase orders for approved CDBG activities. These are for circumstances where CDBG activities approved, their scope of work is amended greater than or less than twenty... For up to twenty-five percent, an increase or decrease in that scope of work. In November twenty-fourteen, the Board approved in its Citizens Participation Plan for staff to do administrative amendments up to that twenty-five percent. Anything greater than that, we do bring before the Board and in comply with our Citizens Participation Plan, hold a public hearing. Anything less than twenty-five percent, we have done administrative amendments. However, given that this is a percentage and not a dollar amount, it sometime exceeds the fifty-thousand-dollar amount that purchasing is authorized to do. This request is to authorize purchasing department to exceed that fifty thousand only in the case of CDBG activities with the administrative amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Señio. Do any of the Commissioners have a question? With that, I'm going to call for a motion.
I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion from the Second District. Second from the First. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Shannon, you can stay up there. Next, we have a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed amendment to the CDBG two thousand sixteen Annual Action Plan and requests for the Board of Commissioners to consider approval of proposed amendment. Ms. Señio?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have a request to amend our two thousand sixteen Annual Action Plan. We have received a request for additional funds from the City of Stockbridge. As you are aware, the City of Stockbridge is utilizing CDBG funds to make improvements to two parks in the cities. They are Memorial and Clark Park. These improvements include the acquisition and the installment of inclusive playground equipment. We're halfway through this activity. This is one of those situations where the scope of work has increased. It has changed. We are requesting an amendment in the sum of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to provide additional funding to assist the City of Stockbridge in the continuizing and the completion of the park improvements for Clark and Memorial Park. Additionally, we are requesting a hundred thousand dollars to assist Henry County residents, those who are in need of septic tank repair or replacement. We are requesting these funds to assist with concerns that have been expressed to our department from the Code Enforcement Department, stormwater, as well as the state's Public Health Department. We are aware that there are many residents in our community who have septic tanks in their residential properties and have fallen into conditions where they are not able to make the needed repairs or replacements. We do have Ms. Barbara Drabnik present from the Code Enforcement Department, should you have specific questions into some of their findings or issues. We are requesting a hundred thousand dollars in CDBG funds to be of benefit to low-to-moder income property owners in Henry County who have septic tanks.
Go ahead. Any questions from Ms. Señio? Go ahead.
Are they allocated to any particular 501(c)(3)?
No, sir. This will be an intergovernmental agreement between the CDBG program and code enforcement. So individual households will apply to the county for assistance, and we will also have to work with the state through the Public Health Department.
So in that application process, what type of things are we gonna measure?
Yes, sir. We will have inspectors... We will do contracts with inspectors specializing in septic tanks. They will go out and evaluate the property. The household will also have to submit to the county documentation in regards to the number of persons in the household in addition to income. All the programs will be based on income.
What about abandoned houses?
We won't be doing any septic tanks with... For abandoned houses. For abandoned houses, we do have a demolition program that we are working in connection with the Code Enforcement Department, but not for these particular funds being requested. This will only be occupied... Homeowner-occupied properties.
Thank you so much. And do any of the Commissioners... This is a public hearing, but do any of the Commissioners have any questions real quick?
Have y'all got a number of how many septic tanks we're gonna be trying to repair with this hundred thousand?
We do not. From what I'm understanding from code enforcement as well as the state Public Health Department, the cost for repair and replacement, it is gonna vary depending on the condition of the individual septic tank. We are starting with a hundred thousand. My hope... I hate to give a number because it's really gonna depend on the condition of the septic tanks for those households who apply. So I do not have a number. I do believe, just from what I've heard, that they're as low as a couple thousand to as much as maybe twenty-five thousand for full replacement, depending on the system.
Yes, I have a question for you. In reference to the hundred thousand dollars, can you talk a little bit about the source of those fundings?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much of the county funding is involved in that, if any? Just talk about the source.
Certainly. The CDBG program will reimburse all of these funds. The hundred thousand that we're requesting is for a CDBG-eligible activity. It will be under our housing rehab for homeowners. The funds will be fronted by the county. We will process reimbursement, so the county will receive all of these funds back from the state. These are funds that have been already allocated to Henry County from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. I just want the citizens to know that this is funding that's been granted by the federal government.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. This time, this is a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed amendments to the CDBG two thousand sixteen Annual Action Plans. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition. Those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. I see no one coming forward, so... Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Public hearing is concluded, as I did not see anyone. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion. We have a motion from the Fifth District. Second, please.
A second.
Second from the Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is a DOT resolution. It's a resolution awarding a bid for the purchase of liquid asphalt emulsion for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Wade Stroud is gonna be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners. Department of Transportation requires liquid asphalt emulsion for various county paving projects. Having a contract for this material allows quick access to the product without the necessity of bidding each time, and guarantees prices will remain firm for the contract period. This request was bid through the purchasing department, and the bid was posted at the county website and listed on the ACCG GLGA website. We had two vendors submit a bid for this invitation. Hudson Materials Company out of Chattanooga, Tennessee was a low bidder on the price index per ton for all materials starting at two hundred and fifty dollars a ton through five hundred dollars a ton, and Aragon Asphalt and Emulsion of Jackson, Mississippi was a low bidder for all materials starting at five hundred and one dollars per ton through one thousand dollars per ton. DOT will be the primary user. However, this contract will be available to all departments that require this commodity. Funding for this product is allocated within the requesting department's budget, and materials will be ordered as required. The current contract we have in place is expired on April the fourteenth, two thousand The current contract we have in place is expired on April the 14th, 2017. We recommend that we do a split award for Hudson Materials Company of Chattanooga, Tennessee for all materials starting at $250 a ton through $500 a ton, and for Ergon Asphalt and Emulsion of Jackson, Mississippi for materials starting at $501 a ton through $1,000 a ton as the overall low bidders. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. Any commissioners have any questions? With that, I'm going to call for a motion.
So move.
A motion from Commissioner Barron. Second. Second. Commissioner Wilson. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have finance. We have a resolution approving revisions to the Henry County travel policy. Presenter is Ms. Lori Lynn Robinson. Thank you.
Good evening. I am here this evening to ask for approval on a resolution to revisions made to the county travel policy. The last amendment to this policy was in 2005. The travel policy shall govern official travel expenses and allowances for county business purposes. This policy applies to all county employees, elected officials, and boards performing governmental functions for Henry County who have their travel expenses reimbursed. All travel is contingent upon the availability of funds in the proper budget line items and approvals by the appropriate officials. The travel policy has established the procedure and guidelines to be maintained and followed. Just to give you a few of the amendments that was between the 2005 and 2017, the changes. Lodging in 2005 was $85 per night. In 2017, the ones that we are amending, we've separated also between in-state and out-of-state. So if it's in-state travel, for lodging is $150, and out-of-state is $200 per night. Meals is another one that has changed in the rates. In 2005, it was $35 per day. The change for 2017, in-state $45 per day and out-of-state $55 per day. Itemized receipts for all meals will have to be submitted. A few other pertinent procedures and guidelines that's in the new policy. County vehicles use is encouraged. However, if you do use your privately owned vehicle, and there's some reasons why you can use your private owned vehicle, if there's not one available for the county or if your spouse or family's going with you, they can't travel in the county vehicle. So that would be one use why you would use your privately owned vehicle. We use the reimbursed rate from the IRS standard mileage rate, which currently today is 53.5 cents per mile. If you have to use transportation by airline, bus, train, or other conveyance, we use the actual economy class fare. That's what's recommended in the policy. And your registration fees also is the actual amount as spent for a conference workshop or professional development courses as shown by valid itemized receipt or invoice from that course or class. You have any questions on any other things? That was just a few of the highlights of the changes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Do any of the Board of Commissioners have a question for Ms. Robinson? All right, at this time, I'm going to call for a motion. A motion from the Fifth District. Second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is airport. A resolution authorizing an official name change of the Henry County Airport. Mr. Michael Tony. Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Again, as Mike Prince noted, I have a resolution before you that authorizes an official name change of the Henry County Airport. So I'll take you back in time. On February 13th of 2013, the board changed the name of the airport from Atlanta South Regional Airport to its current name of Henry County Airport and the associated city from Atlanta to Hampton. If you see Resolution 1330, that resolution authorized the county manager to reserve the three-letter identifier, HMP, or Hotel Mike Papa for future use as a local identifier when approved by FAA and GDOT. Moving ahead to September of 2016, that official name, associated city, and three-letter ID changed to Henry County Airport, Hampton, and HMP respectively took place in the FAA publications. Today, the current Henry County Board desires to change the name of a local identifier and associated city of the airport to a new name. That's more befitting to its location and within its tie to the metro Atlanta market. In addition to that, the Atlanta Motor Speedway, which is obviously a thriving and crucial event facility for the state and a nice-based asset located next to the airport, has advised that they will issue a license to Henry County to use the name Atlanta Speedway Airport. And resolution is required by the FAA and GDOT to institute changes to the airport name, the identifier, as well as the associated city. So what I'm asking is for you guys to change the name of the airport from Henry County Airport to Atlanta Speedway Airport, and this subject to FAA and GDOT approval, the associated city from Hampton to Atlanta, and subject to availability from FAA and GDOT and their approval, as well the local identifier, to be changed from HMP or Hotel Mike Papa to ASA Alpha Sierra Alpha.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Do any commissioners have a question or comment from Mr. Tony?
Mr. Tony, can you talk to us a little bit about the research of the airports that reside next to neighboring speedways and how the impact, economic impact those airports have had being next to the speedways and having that partnership?
Sure, I'll give you just a couple. One in particular, obviously, is kind of one extreme end of the spectrum, as we all know. I'm sure everybody here knows is Daytona. I think just that whole area, as we know, that the central focus of that area is the actual Speedway itself. And in talking to their economic development team or a member of their team down there, surely the airport thrives on the Speedway. In fact, their airport really, in his words, wouldn't really exist like it does today without the Speedway. And some of the businesses that came to that airport were as a result of the Speedway itself. Something a little similar to us, which would be Talladega in Alabama, and also another airport I reached out to, actually in Iowa, which is a little more rural than us, but the same thing. Both of those airports thrive with their partnership with the Speedway. And I think from both a marketing standpoint as well as a flight planning standpoint, I think you get instant name identification and instant name recognition with the Speedway in Atlanta as the identifier. The other thing that was added to each of those airports is all of the improvements, or most of the improvements that occurred around the airport and specifically within the airport, and the internal improvements that occurred, whether it be, you know, safety improvements for the runway, extensions, things of that nature, all really came as a result or were driven by the fact that they had the Speedway there and the Speedway drove the type of traffic that was coming to that airport. I think one thing to note, too, is that I think it's really a benefit, you know, to not only the, you know, the community and really the Speedway and us partnering with them, but it also benefits all users of the airport, down to, you know, your local general aviation pilot. If you can have better facilities and better accommodations for different types of aircraft, then obviously that benefits everyone, so.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners, District 1?
Can you speak to what we're doing to make that airport more of a revenue generator for the county?
Yeah, certainly. I think that's another thing. Obviously, our partnership with the Speedway will hopefully help to generate more revenue. If we can get more of that traffic in, we can get more people to realize that there are things that we can do or that they can do with the Speedway that they might offer to us. You know, obviously, we can get more fuel sales. We might can get somebody that might want to stay overnight, stay in a hangar, you know, pay an overnight fee, things like that. Obviously, fuel sales and whether it be hangar leases or overnight types of fees will help in generating revenue.
The type of jets that can land at the airport now, the size of the jets?
Well, absolutely. This year, we actually had a lot more activity than we did last year. We had seven jets that we handled this year that we did not handle last year. One was from one particular flight team or racing team, I guess if you want to call it that, or a charter team for the racing teams. They have, I think, seven or eight aircraft in their fleet. We handled six out of the seven. It's an Embraer 145, which is probably a 50 to 70 passenger plane. And then there was one from Earnhardt Enterprises that was the same plane. Those planes did not come last year. The thing that we benefited from, obviously, this year and even last year was the weather. I think if we had some weather issues, they might not be able to come because of some approaches that we don't have. I think that's a big step that we need to really push, is to try to get better approaches that will help alleviate and get those planes here every year. If they can be located next to the Speedway where they're going to, they're going to come. I mean, that's plain and simple. All the race teams that I've spoke with, that's where they want to be, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? District 3.
Mr. Tony, I know Commissioner Clemmons has been very aggressive on getting some things done at the airport. Can you kind of give us an update where we stand on the FOB and sewer line that the county's putting in?
Absolutely. Let me also start by saying with the name change, there's obviously going to be a timeline associated with that. And so in saying that, I'll kind of throw in where we are as well with development or improvements at the airport. So right now or currently, we have a road relocation project that is underway. It's a 300-day project started in, I think, March 26th was the official notice to proceed that was given. So it's supposed to be completed around January of 2018. So right after that, and what that enables us to do is go into the next step, which is the removal of the displaced threshold that we have currently on runway 24 that prohibits landing 490, we have to land basically 490 feet past the end of that runway. So that enables us to have full utility of the runway. So that's the next step in this project, is once we get that road relocation done, then we start, which we're in design now for the removal of that displaced threshold, which will involve restriping the airport, or the airport, the runway, excuse me, and improving the end of the runway or having full runway protection zone and runway safety area improvements at the end of the runway. So that will occur after this road relocation that we're in now. I would estimate right now, that's probably either 120 to maybe 150-day project. So after that, when that project is finished, we'll have to update our official publications and flight procedures and things like that, which requires a flyover to collect all the current data, what will be the new current data of that runway and that runway end. Once we do that, we will officially do that name change in conjunction with that, to do it all at one time. Because otherwise, we'd be doing it again, and it's a process because all the directories and all the publications would have to be changed again. So we're going to try to, you know, what we're looking to do is plan it to where we do that name change and we submit the name change in conjunction with the end of that runway safety area improvement project. So look for that to occur, you know, probably, I'm guessing, maybe August to September of 2018 is when all that will take place. The sewer project right now, Phase 1, which was bringing the main trunk line or a trunk line to provide, or what will provide a connection for the internal sewer, that's scheduled to be complete by the end of this calendar year. We have a kickoff meeting for Phase 2, which is the internal airport sewer. We have a kickoff meeting for that next week, next Tuesday. That's probably about a 45-day design. I think that might have been what we talked about in the last meeting that we had. About a 45-day design, and then we'll put it out. Either put it out to bid or actually do it as a change order with the existing contractor that's working on the sewer right now. It's in construction. And then, as far as the FBO, we had our first preliminary, it's in design, and we had our first preliminary site plan sent to us about the third week in March. So it's in design right now. So the idea would be whenever the sewer main trunk line is finished, right after that, the internal airport sewer would start in conjunction with, you know, the FBO as well. So I would estimate, you know, say this time, let's say no later than two years from now, I would hope to see a brand-new terminal building and sewer-ready airport infrastructure.
Well, I certainly appreciate what you've done, and also, Ms. Clemmons, I appreciate what you've done moving airport forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions?
And just for our citizens, we've got a jewel in an airport in this county. And I think the last time we checked, our airport is making about $6,000 a year. That is unacceptable in Henry County for an airport, for us to be the county that we are, the county that we're proud of. So these efforts that we're talking about tonight is to move our airport forward, to try to turn it around, to try to make sure that it is an economic engine that is generating funds, at least to be self-supportive. The name change is more to talk about the marketing aspects of it and also with our partnership with the Speedway. The other thing that we didn't discuss was that having that partnership with the Speedway and tying ourselves into that landmark is that when pilots fly into our airport, the Ubers and the taxis are there waiting to take them out of Henry County. So when they fly in, they're leaving Henry County. So by having this partnership with the Speedway, they are granting the space that they have in the condos that pilots can actually spend the night in Henry County. They have meeting facilities there that our pilots and our guests that fly into our airport would be able to utilize, those meeting facilities. So this is not just about a name change, but this is about a landmark. There's a huge project called the Atlanta Aerotropolis and the CID that are funding programs and projects around airports. We're the closest airport to Hartsfield-Jackson. And just for our aviation improvement and making sure that we're part of that demographics of aviation and transportation in this state of Georgia, I think this is a good way for us to go.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, any comments?
I just want to say congratulations to Commissioner Clemmons. Ever since she has come to the board, she has brought some innovative ideas to the table with regards to Nash Farms, with regards to the airport. She is working hard to make both of those things that were considered money losers in the past, revenue generators, and that's the type of thinking we need on this board. So thank you so much for all your efforts.
And I have a comment as well. I'm from Henry County, and I'm very proud of Henry County. And as we all know, I'm ex-military and I've been all over the country. When I told people I was from Henry County, they did not know where I was from. But when I said I'm from the Atlanta Motor Speedway, they would say, oh, you're from Hampton. So when we start talking about promoting an area, promoting a business, promoting Henry County, the Motor Speedway is Henry County. And I'm very proud to say it's part of Henry County and it is a part of our community. So I know there's been some concerns of changing it from Henry County Airport to Atlanta Speedway Airport, but I do feel that that is true to Henry County and it remains true to the history of Henry County and our community. So, and I'd like to also thank Commissioner Clemmons for her efforts she's doing out there. We've seen some movement. It's been sitting for far too long, and I think that's one of the biggest assets that we have that we're not using. So thank you, Commissioner, for getting us on there, and thank you, and let's look forward to some positive movement.
Any more comments or questions?
Clemmons for her efforts out there as well, so.
All right. Thank you. This time, I'm going to call for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that tonight we do an official name change of the Henry County Airport to the Atlanta Speedway Airport.
Motion by the Second District. Do I have a second? Second from the Fifth District. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Thank you. This time, I've just received word, public hearing COP AM-15-04 and public hearing RZ-15-12, that is the Rayco Greenwood Business Park. They have had an issue and have postponed it. So if you're here for the COP Amendment 15-4 Rayco Greenwood Business or RZ-15-12, we will not be hearing that this evening. Up next is planning and zoning. This is a public hearing. ULDC Amendment 17-03, An Ordinance by Henry County, Georgia to amend Chapter 12 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code to add Section 12.2.6 I-5, Limiting the Number of Special Events Per Year Countywide. Mr. Dante Gibbs.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is a staff-initiated ULDC text amendment regarding our special event code section 12.02.06I. There exist regulatory inadequacies in the Unified Land Development Code specific to special events. And so in an effort to address these insufficiencies, staff is proposing to limit the number of permissible event facility-related special events in the RA, which is Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Zoning District, per year, as well as, in addition to requiring an approved conditional use and special event permit. As the ULDC is currently written, event facility-related events can be unlimited in the RA zoning district. The proposed limitation keeps in mind maintaining the residential character of the RA zoning district and minimizing the potential impact on associated infrastructure. With that said, planning and zoning staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Gibbs, do any commissioners have any questions at this time? This is a public hearing.
Spencer, can you talk to me about how this would affect movie, film industry that's trying to use the facilities in our county for filming?
By right, certain uses specific to event facilities are allowed in our commercial zonings. But when it comes to the filming, it just depends on where they are, where they have selected to film. We have a special event process that we take them through. We coordinate with PD, we coordinate with DOT, we coordinate with Parks and Rec, we coordinate with all the applicable departments to make sure that every asset is in place to help facilitate the filming. Now, if they film on a county-owned property, then there's another, there's an extra step that they take through our communications department with respect to legal requirements. So it won't necessarily, it won't affect or prevent filming from happening in Henry County. This is specific to residentially-zoned properties that are, that have event-related or event facility-type of uses going on.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have a question. I was going to say, can you tell us, for the resident, we had to go, go through to file a permit for a special event, what would happen before they could get a permit?
Sure. What a resident would need to do is submit an application for conditional use through the planning and zoning department. Per our process that's outlined in our ULDC, that application will go to our zoning advisory board, but it must first meet our, the zoning procedures law, so it has to be advertised. It has to be advertised in the paper, and also the property, their respective property posted. Once it goes to the zoning advisory board, they are the deciding body for conditional uses. And for a property that is zoned, RA, then not only do they have to have an approved conditional use, but they also need to have, or have to have, a special event permit. The special event permit process is also an application submitted to the planning and zoning department. It doesn't go to a board, but it comes through our department, and they have to meet the requirements of the application. And then that meeting involves multiple departments to make sure all pertinent requirements and code requirements are met.
So are there times that they have to shut these downs, or is there a certain time that the event has to?
Depending on how they answer the questions that we ask them in the meetings for the special event, we determine the parameters set. We do have a noise ordinance that will need to be met. We do have certain limitations with respect to how long that noise can be had, if it's on private property, and if it's not violating any type of particular noise ordinance or any type of other issue related to alcohol consumption, or any violation that will need to be addressed by PD or code enforcement if it's during business hours. Though, it would have to be a violation of any applicable code. And in most cases, we find out about those through complaints.
Do we allow events to go for 24 hours?
24 hours straight?
Yes.
There is no provision for a 24-hour straight venue, but there's also no prohibition for a 24-hour straight venue.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay.
I have a question for you, if you don't mind. So that we can be clear on this, we have several special use permit event facilities in the county now. What if they have stuff that's already booked? I know that's going to be an issue for me in District Two. What happens with those things that they have booked prior to this resolution tonight?
For those special events that have rendered application to the county and have already received, or had their meeting and received their special event approval, as long as they've rendered application, they are vested prior to the adoption of this ordinance. So it will be effective as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance, so it'll be from this point forward that they will be, that the limitation will apply.
Now, question. Dante, if they've already booked out, because I hate to affect people's business, I understand, you know, what we're doing here and why we're trying to do it, but several things, and I point this out, a wedding, you know, people plan weddings, and they get pretty touchy about them, and they're already on the docket. Perhaps we need to put a timeline of this goes into effect in, you know, three months, six months, something to give these people time, because I have a real issue, I actually know somebody who has a wedding planned, to tell them, oh, by the way, we passed this, and now you have to completely revamp your entire wedding and redo everything. I have a bit of an issue with that if we don't push this back to actually implement this at a later date. But let's do the public hearing, and let's get back to that. We do need to talk about that. This is a public hearing regarding ULDC Amendment 17-03. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of 10 minutes to present their oppositions. Those in favor will likewise have 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if we're going to do things like that, there should be a form that, when an applicant comes in, he's got a detailed policy of what he's got to do. And then there should be a timeline of when we, as a county, have to perform that permit. If not, they get around and around, just like a merry-go-round, and you can't expect anything to happen if it's that situation. So if you're going to do that, put a list of what's got to be done, give it to them, let everybody sign, and then they got to, the county's got to perform in an appropriate amount of time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I would just like to say that as a parent of one of those weddings that's going to be held.
I'm sorry.
Connie Ramsey.
Okay. Thank you.
As a parent of one of those weddings that is scheduled to be held at an event here in Henry County, I agree with this, you know, having to have some limitations on it, but I would agree with the fact that we need to set some kind of grace period that this goes into effect, because weddings are planned years, sometimes in advance, sometimes, you know, we can't turn a wedding around in two weeks and get another venue. So I would just like to put that on the table, that we have some kind of grace period allowing these other families, not just mine, to make those necessary arrangements. But I do think it's a good ruling.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? All right, I'm going to close that. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? You will have 10 minutes. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Linda Gresham, and I live at 340 Rocky Creek Drive. And I have a neighbor that is running a special events venue called McCree's Cottonwood Estates. And my property abuts up to his on the back. And he's had very numerous special events over the past year and a half. And it's like a party in my backyard each time this happens. And it's loud, it's disturbing to my other neighbors, as well as myself and my husband. And I think that this ordinance is needed, or amendment is needed, to at least limit the exposure to this kind of activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Frank Austin. Been a Henry County resident for over 30-something years. We definitely need this limitation on these special permits. Henry County is well-known for their RA-type developments, our lifestyle of being able to come home, nice peaceful homes. These type of event facilities ruin a neighborhood, okay? Individuals with individual wedding plans and stuff, I understand that, but we're living with it every weekend. Oh, it's just totally disruptive to the whole atmosphere in a residential neighborhood. We're not looking to put the wedding venues out of business as long as they're in an appropriate place, not in someone's backyard. Our neighborhood's not the only neighborhood in the county that's experiencing this. There are other neighborhoods that are having the same problems. This needs to go into effect, it needs to be today, is my opinion. We can't destroy the reputation of our neighborhoods, the life in our neighborhoods. RA development in Henry County is going away, unfortunately, with the encroachment of more businesses, more people. We're tending to go to more apartments, we're going to more multifamily dwellings. The RA lifestyle is going to be a thing of the past. This is one step we need to take today to preserve that lifestyle in Henry County. And I urge you strongly to do just that today. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Pamela Barlow.
The microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm Pamela Barlow. I live at 205 Rocky Creek Road. And I'm totally against this and want y'all to pass this where they will stop. They're having parties Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. You're not behind them. Your house is not behind them listening to it. I have, I mean, there's ludicrous music, Cyndi Lauper, and it's very loud. And I have a lake that my parents passed away and have left me a beautiful 10-acre lake, and I can't even enjoy it because of this. So I think y'all need to think that it might be your backyard that this is in, and think about it. And please pass this.
Good evening. My name is Mark Stevens. I reside at 405 Rocky Creek Drive from the event center. I probably live the farthest away. The sound is reverberates. It's loud, it's annoying. There's a traffic issue, a safety issue at the beginning of these things, at the end of these things. People partake in beverages that might hinder their good driving behaviors as they do leave. There is an issue with a golf cart that runs up and down Rocky Creek Drive, Road, on many occasions for picture-taking. There's many issues here that haven't been addressed that should be considered. I think this should go into effect right away.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jean Castinger. I live at 323 Rocky Creek Road. I'm in 110% favor of you doing this, but immediately, please. You don't have strangers in your backyard or driving over your lawn. You don't have damage done to your property. This is a residential community of older homes and folks and people. We have a lifestyle that we've had for years and years and years, and suddenly, we have a party venue where, when you get up at 3:30, Monday through Friday, in the morning to go to work, they're not shutting down till 10:00. You're trying to go to bed by 8:00, and music is waking you up at 9:30, straight out of your bed. While it's, I understand about weddings, this was an illegal venue for the last 24 months or more. So I'm sorry for those people who scheduled weddings, but it's an illegal venue. It needs to be stopped, and the only way you teach somebody a lesson not to do things like that is to stop it. None of you would like this in your subdivision, or next door to you, or two doors down. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Question.
Sure.
How long has this been going on?
Probably the last two years that we noticed it, 18 months to two years. We thought it was family parties. We didn't realize it was a business. Being the small community that we are, we said, ah, overlook it, la-la-la, you know? Then we found out it was a business, and it was like, oh, excuse me, let me wipe this egg off my face. Let's, no, no, no. This man has 23 permits. He went and got 10, he got 10 more, he got two more, and he got one more. We're nonstop. He was denied his conditional use permit. So, you know, it needs to stop. We don't, we have children, grandchildren, we can't let them out. We don't know who these people are wandering around. Oh, look at the forest. We, there's alcohol served on the premises. We don't know what's in our neighborhood. The added traffic is horrendous. The fact that there, you cannot control that kind of an atmosphere like you can a bar atmosphere. No one wants to live next door to a bar, or a lounge, or a restaurant, and I'm certain that none of you do. We selected our homes away from that type of an atmosphere, too. We have a right to ask for protection from that. We didn't want it when we bought our homes, when we paid for our homes. We pay our taxes, we're good stewards of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline.
Anyone else wishing to speak? We have 45 seconds. I don't know if you're going to make it. 30 seconds, make it quick. Name for the record?
My name's Mike Gresham. I live at 340 Rocky Creek Drive. I support this with reservations. My preference would be that there be no special event permits and that there be no conditional use, because the second you do that, the residential place is no longer residential. It turns into a commercial venue, and that's exactly what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the public hearing. Dante, would you please come back up? Do any commissioners have any questions for Dante or comments?
Dante, we've heard a lot of complaints about this noise and all that. How can these residents handle that?
With respect to noise, after-hours, they can call PD. That's, that would be the agency to handle after-hour noise complaints or issues like that. During normal business hours, code enforcement would be the agency or the department that can handle those particular type of complaints. So with respect to enforcing the noise ordinance, if it's the weekend, our PD department would be the agency to handle that.
What is that timeframe on shutting it down at night? Do you have a time?
No, I don't have a specific timeframe. What we do try to ask during our special event permitting meetings is, what's the start date and what's the end date? And so when we issue the permit, those are the parameters that we set. But as far as there being a code to say you cannot exceed a certain time, there's only specific times to our noise ordinance.
How many permits have been issued to these as of now? Can these venues get them for the rest of the year, every weekend, until we adopt this?
As our code is currently written, technically, it's unlimited. There are no limitations. Technically, they can come in for a special event permit, and we have, as long as they meet the minimal requirements, which is little to none, other than if there are issues with traffic, they got to meet those, providing security through our PD or Sheriff's Department. If there are going to be fireworks, they have to get special permission for that. But as long as they meet the criteria of our special event permit process, then we have no grounds to say no.
So if we move forward with this tonight, what's going to happen with all the permits that have been issued for?
It would depend on whether or not the Board of Commissioners issue a grace period. If there is a grace period, then the, at the effective date of the grace, at the end of the grace period, from that point forward, the limitation will apply. from that point forward, the limitation will apply. So between now and then, the applicants can technically apply for special events and it be unlimited. But if it is effective today, then from today forward, they have to have a conditional use permit and a special event permit in order to have an event facility, but they're also limited to one per month, five per year.
Okay, so the permits they have now, so if you got an event, they have 20 permits?
We cannot retro and it be considered constitutional.
So they'll have to, we have to allow them to carry them, but we could put this in place tonight. Whoever has the permit, we can, they can do the 20 events and we can limit them after that to five events.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I asked, how many of those permits do you have currently?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but based on what I heard earlier, it looks to be somewhere in the ballpark of 20.
So if they have 20 permits, they would have to use up all 20 permits by what date or what time?
If they have 20 permits as of right now, then they can have those events. But if they submit for a permit from today forward, and they are limited to five. So that's basically what you're looking at. They can have the events that are permitted prior to today's date, if the ordinance is effective today.
So do the permits have a date on them? Do they pull permits by date, so they just go in and pull 20 permits?
No, we have a date on the actual permit that we issue to them. So depending on when the application meeting was held, and then the permit is written, there isn't an actual date of the event and the actual date on the permit of when it's issued.
So let me be clear, if a facility went in and they got 20 permits, those 20 permits already have the dates on them, and whether we pass this or not, if we pass this tonight, they still get to have those 20 that are already out there?
Correct, because they technically rendered application to the county.
Okay, and let me ask you another question. I heard the word illegal, that this particular venue that the community is here for tonight is an illegal venue. I need you to talk to me about that, because I'm okay with permits being pulled for legal venues. But is this an illegal venue? And I also heard someone talk about some other issues with septic tanks and some EPA issues. So talk a little bit about that.
Sure. With respect to it being a venue and having the alleged being illegal, how we came to know this was through a complaint. We came to know that there were events being held that were generating revenue. It was via complaint, so we looked into it and then we had them come in to come into compliance. For events like, event for facilities like this, in the grand scheme of things, it's hard to keep track of them if we don't have them on the books, if we don't have a record of where they are, and if they have not made application. But when we get a complaint, we make sure they come into compliance with what our code requires. So that's why we sent them to our zoning advisory board for conditional use and took them through that process. The zoning advisory board denied their application for conditional use, and they're appealing it. Right now, it's postponed, so they'll be coming back to the board of commissioners, I'm thinking in June. Now, with regard to the septic issue, that is an environmental health issue that needs to be handled by that particular agency. If there is some type of septic leakage that is going from that property to another, then they would be the proper, property department to handle that complaint and make sure they comply and make the necessary repairs and upgrades to the septic system to handle whatever's going on.
So is there something in place or something that we can add tonight that those venues that have permits, that they have to be legal venues? Because we don't want to support an illegal venue with environmental issues. I know I can't, so I'm just trying to figure out, how do you know what is and what isn't?
With respect to the applications that have been rendered to the county for special events, technically, as long as they meet the criteria, we have no grounds right now to say no. Now, environmental health, if they say that the septic tank has failed, or whatever they, whatever decisions or whatever that they come back to us and say, our application now has a checkbox that says, will the septic tank support a venue or the proposed use? That will be effective as of today if this is adopted. Prior to today, our application did not have that. So unless the environmental health department has a way to where they can say, no, you can no longer operate or utilize the septic system until you upgrade it, then that's separate from us. With respect to the county, they have to meet the criteria as it's written right now, which is not much. But after tonight, if this is adopted, this gives us a little bit more grounds to, and review material.
Gary.
Dante, we talked about 20 permits. Is this one group that's doing this, or is it spread out over the whole county?
Tonight, we're just addressing this one particular location. So it will be this one group that has rendered application.
So they've got 20 permits?
I will have to confirm that. Let me look into it first thing in the morning or later on this evening, and then confirm how many we actually have officially on record for this site.
My next question, if we pass this, if they've got 20, are they gonna get five more? Do they, they have to be included with these 20 as part of the five?
It cannot be retro and considered constitutional. So what we, what will happen is if they have 20 already, all right, they have those 20. But effective as of, if it's tonight, as of today's date, they have only five more that they can receive. But they have to have a conditional use permit, an approved conditional use permit along with the special event. So they don't have a conditional use permit, and they cannot have the venue. It cannot be one or the other, they have to have both.
Personnel out to look at these properties before we issue permits?
Staff, we do conduct site visits, and then we do spot check from time to time. But as of sending other departments to go out and look, no. If we get a complaint, then that's when other departments will go out and actually put eyes on the subject property, see what's going on.
Before every event?
Before every event to check on what specific?
To see if they, if the septic tank's up to par, if the?
We cannot inspect septic systems, that is an environmental health issue. What we have to do is reach out to environmental health to see if they've done that.
So does the fire marshal not need to go out for these crowds?
With respect to the fire department, they have requirements, if they have tents that are a certain square footage, there are inspections that are required, there are certain things they have to check on that, to make sure they're fire retardant and that kind of thing. Septic systems are an environmental health matter. And it cannot be determined by our fire marshal or fire department if the septic system is in compliance. It would have to be environmental health.
So how much are we charging for the permits?
Special event permits are $50 per permit.
How many people go out to inspect the sites from the county?
It depends, it just depends. If it's staff, it will be one planner, whoever's assigned to it to go out and spot check, to go out and look at the property when they post a sign for, if it's a conditional use permit that is being applied for. But that's kind of what you can expect.
So one staff member and maybe one person from?
Potentially. And the fire department has inspections that they have to do with respect to the tents. That's additional staff that goes out. If DOT needs to go out and look at the road, they'll go out and check the road to see what parameters need to be set. If PD needs to go out and kind of see what, where they need to put their staff, then they'll do that. But it's all kind of relative to the actual event and what's going on.
So one permit covers all that? $50 covers all that?
$50 covers the processing of the permit.
And sending all these people out to inspect the property if needed?
$50 covers the processing, the application.
The planning and zoning department actually conducts the special event hearing, but there is a separate fee that is charged by the fire department, and that's a $150 fee for their permitting. Now, if there is a, if the fire department is involved in that process, they will go out prior to the event. And the planning staff will not issue a letter of approval or denial until all agencies have confirmed that they are in compliance with everything. So before that permit is issued, the fire department will give their okay. DOT will give their okay, and then the environmental health department will also give an okay. So before Dante's office releases that letter, all agencies have to verify that the event is in compliance with our rules and regulations.
I guess my point was, if we're sending all these people out for $50, maybe we need to go up on the fees.
So noted, thank you.
Very duly noted, and, but with respect to that, Sherry is absolutely right. Earlier, I stated there's a process, and there are multiple departments and agencies that are involved, and then that the applicant has to meet the criteria of the special event permitting process. So yes, there are multiple checkpoints, checkmarks, things that they have to meet. We wait until everybody has either approved, or said no, or rendered their their requirements in order to come into compliance before we issue the actual permit. And yes, it's for $50.
District two.
Now, this didn't happen prior to tonight. You mean this is what's gonna happen in the future, right?
No, that's our process now. Our process now involves those.
The 20 that went to an illegal facility, all of our people went out?
If they came through our special event permitting process, then technically, they're in compliance with our special event code section as it's written.
We had a resident come up tonight and said there was an illegal facility in her neighborhood. Did we go out to that facility and approve it?
If it was illegal, that means they were not permitted by Henry County Planning and Zoning.
So the facility they're talking about now, do you know if it's permitted or not?
As of right now, they have special event permits that they have rendered application to the county for. But they do not have a conditional use for the event facility per our UODC requirements.
District three.
Dante, do they have to post that permit out at the property line, like residents could check and see if they got a permit?
No, there's no requirement to post the permit.
Any comments? Dante, here's the rub. I think we're trying to throw a blanket over the county when we need to be tuning it up and just striking one strike. I hear you guys. I've reviewed the venue. I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't work. It's just not enough acreage to make it happen. But I need you guys to realize, in my district, I live in Kellytown, we have large venues. I have people that have 50, 100 acres that do this, and they have, they have the venues to do this. If we're trying to stop something for you guys, but we're gonna damage my district pretty bad. I can't, I can't do that. I think we need to work on that problem that they're having and not try to fix their problem by blanketing the county. I've got a lot of venues I can think of right now, several in Kellytown, perfect for what this is going to limit. And we're gonna shut down, I know several right now. And I, I just think we're trying to, again, throw a blanket over the county instead of honing in on what the problem is.
Not so much a blanket, but I think I see what you're saying. There are probably some other things we can explore and make it specific to a certain acreage limit or acreage size.
More sense.
We can do that, but that would require that this be tabled, revisited, and then bring it back to the VOC, if it's the board of commissioners.
When can their issue be addressed? I mean, when is that coming up to the board? Because did the ZAB turn that down?
The appeal that you're, are you referring to?
Yes.
That will be the second meeting in June. They asked to table it last month, if I remember correctly. We reached out to them today to see when they would like to have that back on the agenda. So the appeal for the denied conditional use by the ZAB will be in June. So you're looking at a couple more months.
All right. For me to support this, we're gonna have to talk about acreage area. Because again, I, and the other commissioners need to realize, if you've got some areas that are large acreage, you may have somebody pulling these permits, and they're gonna be fine. They have the area to do these, do these events. Well, they would be RA, but everything's owned RA if it's not?
They would be legal with conditional use permits already.
Some, some you can't, we have to clarify. There's no clarification here.
They're having over in District two, that's the same problem.
I'm not having this problem. I have just the opposite. I have good venues.
30 days, and then that, because somebody's gonna get wind, and all they're gonna come in here and get 25 or 30 more permits.
Oh yeah, the permits are gonna fly in the morning.
Yeah.
If I may, I have a suggestion and talk to the council. Another option to consider would be to allow a, an event facility by right in the RA zoning district that meets a minimum acreage requirement. As an example, if it's 20 acres or more, 50 acres or more by right, it can't, or with approved conditional use, it can't have or be served as an event facility without limitations. But anything below that will be limited to this amount. That's something that the board could consider to kind of?
And I, I'm in favor of that. Do we need to go back, you know, again, I want to address their issue, because your issue is pretty serious. I've looked, again, looked at the venue, and it, it doesn't work. But we need to kind of tune this up a little bit.
Sure, we can amend the language depending on how you motion. If you want to limit it to a minimum acreage and not limit those that are in the RA zoning district that have so many acres or more, then we can amend the language to reflect that, but?
Where I'm at, Dante, I don't like making decisions on the fly like this. I would rather postpone this. We're working toward this, I hear you. And put it back on the agenda, amend this to actually get an acreage figure?
I'd rather try to add it in tonight or make the motion and see if it passes or not, because we're talking about people's livelihood, we're talking about people that are being distressed because of a facility. This opens up the doors for more permits in District one, as well as District two, three, five, and four. I would say that we add the condition to the acreage then tonight or take the vote.
Chairman, pardon? You're a little constrained what you can do tonight because of the Zoning Procedures Act. The ordinance that you're considering now is separate from the ordinance that establishes special event permit properties. You can't amend that ordinance tonight because we haven't complied with the zoning procedures law for that other ordinance. I think what Dante's suggesting is tonight, you could adopt this ordinance if you so chose. You could, you could take care of the immediate problem. Now, until you're able to bring that other ordinance back that would have an acreage limitation where people could just do permits without having to go through this extra process, there may be a burden on, for at least for a temporary period of time. But if Dante's staff can get that worked through the process within a month or so, you probably won't have a big impact on some of those bigger event facilities. The idea is you can, you can have some event facilities, today they have to be in commercial zoning districts, that don't have to go through this process. This process only applies to residential. So we could take that other special event ordinance, modify it to include residential property over some minimum threshold acreage, and probably put some other regulations about distance from boundary lines and things like that. But if you want to solve tonight's problem tonight, you could. But you can't solve the bigger picture problem tonight simply because we're limited by the Zoning Procedures Act. We have to give notice and advertisements and all of those kind of things.
Go ahead, District three.
If we decide to table this to kind of get all our ducks in a row, could we put a 45-day moratorium on all special events to keep any new ones from coming in till we get this issue resolved?
That could potentially affect the filming industry that the county is actually supportive of, but Patrick?
The problem is if you're gonna do a moratorium, it's gotta be effective against everybody. You can't pick and choose who it's against. And, you know, you could, you could create, you know, in the interest of trying to solve one problem, you could create other problems. And, you know, I think what, what might be more effective is, I guess Dante's gonna have to figure out how fast he can amend that other ordinance.
As long as we can meet the 15-day minimum zoning procedures law requirement, we can have it back to the board of commissioners within a month's time, roughly.
Dante, how far in advance do they get the special use permits?
We ask for two weeks' notice at minimum, before the actual event. Sometimes they come in a lot longer beforehand, sometimes they come in in the 11th hour.
So question, on the permits that are out right now, I mean, are we talking six months from now, these citizens are gonna have this issue again, because there's already a permit issued at this time?
Potentially, yes. Potentially, if the permits have already been issued.
I would like to make the motion that we adopt this ordinance tonight.
Motion from the second district, and a second from the first. Any discussion or comments? All in favor? All opposed? Next up on the agenda is public hearing, MC 1301. Builders Professional Group of Jonesboro, Georgia, request a modification of zoning conditions for property located within the Madison Square subdivision, west of Kinder Drive and Leadline 82 of the sixth district. The quest to modify multiple zoning conditions. This is District three, Dante Gibbs.
Thank you, chairman and commissioners. The applicant is requesting to modify two zoning conditions placed on the subject property in 2003.
The applicant is requesting to modify two zoning conditions placed on the subject property in two thousand and three. From the two thousand and three rezoning case, a total of fourteen conditions were placed on the subject property, of which condition number four currently requires a minimum house size of thirteen hundred square feet. And condition number six requires that all sides of each home be brick or stone, with the exception of the soft, its fascia and decorative trim having an option to use vinyl or other suitable materials. The applicant is requesting to modify condition number four to increase the minimum house size to two thousand square feet of heated floor sp, floor space. And condition number six to allow the exterior of all homes to consist of fronts that are brick and or stone, with hardy plank type siding in size of any slab home having a brick water table extending two to three feet, depending on whether or not the home is single or two-story. The remaining sides would be hardy plank type siding. And with that said, planning and zoning staff has no objection to the applicant's request, and I am happy to answer any question that you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Does anybody have any question? This is a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions for Dante? All right. Would the applicant please come forward? Thank you. Please present your case.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Chris Knight. I live at one eighteen Whitestone Drive, McDonough, Georgia. I'm a partner in this company, Builders Professional Group. Our office is in Jonesboro. We employ approximately thirty-five people, about half of which live in Henry County. This project we acquired several years ago, and we've been trying to determine what, what to do with it, what was viable for the market. The project's been stalled for approximately nine years. There are eighty-eight home sites in the, in the neighborhood with fourteen existing homes, leaving seventy-four typically fifty-foot wide single-family residential lots that we, that we own. The half, about half of the lots are typical, are suitable for slab construction, and about half of the lots are suitable for basement construction, which is a little bit unique on a, on a fifty-foot lot, which has contributed to our, our delay in trying to figure out how to, how to build this project out in a, in a way that's viable to the market. We, we sent out letters to, we're, we're bordered, a little bit about the site. We're bordered by the west, on the west by I seventy-five. We're bordered to the north by a community called Annaberg, which was recently built out in the last three, three to four years. We're bordered on the south by Pinecrest Baptist Church and Creekside Christian School. And we're bordered on the east by just vacant land that adjoins some of the commercial development that is cropping up on Jonesboro Road with the Bojangles and that Sherwin-Williams right in that area. We sent out letters. From our research, it appears that of the fourteen existing homes in the community, we think only two of those may be owner occupied. There is one other owner that is a Henry County, has a Henry County owner's address, but it is not the address of that, of that residence. We sent letters out to, to those owners. We described our intent in moving forward with the project and requesting this modification. We, we asked for them to call us, to email us if they had any questions or feedback. And we did not receive any inquiries from that attempt. Couple things about the, the architecture. So the other, let me, let me comment real quick on the other eleven homes. They appear to be owned primarily by two funds, larger funds that operate rental properties. This neighborhood was, was started at exactly the wrong time in the economic cycle. And so not only did the lots end up in foreclosure, most of the homes did as well. And they ended up selling in bulk to some funds that operate rental portfolios. So it's currently occupied mainly by renters. We are the declarant of the Homeowners Association and intend to revitalize the, the entrance and the, the neighborhood to that extent. We're requesting a modification on the architecture. A couple things about that. Styles, preferences have changed over the years. We, we think that's a, an important point. The other thing that happened is a few years ago, Annaberg directly to our north applied for and received almost the exact request that we're, we're requesting the modification tonight. And then they proceeded to, to build and sell quite well. Their lots are larger than ours are. They, they were typical sixty-eight foot lot. Our lots are typical fifty foot, feet wide, which, which gives us some challenges that we're, we're dealing with. And the other thing about the, the architecture is recent zonings that have come before this board have been approved with architectural facades that are consistent with what we're, what we're requesting here tonight as well. So in conclusion, we're proposing to modify the materials. I've met with Commissioner Barham and, and, and staff and, and made this request. And we think this will allow us to move forward with the project very quickly, build new homes, and take a neighborhood that's been broken down for about nine years and, and move it forward. We would greatly appreciate your, your consideration on this request. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Do, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right. This is a public hearing regarding MC thirteen oh one. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition. Those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward at this time. I see no one. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward at this time. I see no one. With no one coming up, I conclude this public hearing. Do commissioners have any questions or concerns? All right. Call for a motion.
To approve these modification changes to allow, four, the minimum house size heated space shall be two thousand square feet. And six, the interior of all homes shall consist of front that are brick and are stoke, stone, with the remainder of the front being hardy plank type siding. The sides of any slab home shall have a brick water table extending at a minimum of twenty-four inches above the grade of a single-story home and a minimum of a thirty-six from a grade of a two-story home. The remainder of all sides shall be hardy plank type siding. The sides of any basement homes that are not brick and stone shall be hardy plank type siding. The rear of any home that is not brick or stone shall be hardy plank type siding.
All right. We have a motion from the third district. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from the first. Any comments or discussion from the board? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Next public hearing is MC seventeen dash zero one. Adler Properties of Atlanta, request a modification to an approved development plan for the property located at Town Center Village Drive near Jonesboro Road in Landlots one-ten and one-fifteen in the sixth district. The property consists of twenty-eight point seven-one plus or minus acres, and the request is to update the master plan development from C-three highway commercial to RM multifamily residential for the development of apartments. Dante Gibbs is presenting. Dante?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to modify two zoning conditions that relate to the allowable uses on a certain number of acres currently designated as commercial pods of the associated planned development. The modification would allow an expansion of the existing RM multifamily, the pod of the planned development, to add an additional sixteen plus or minus acres. And the expressed intent of the applicant is to meet or exceed the standard of the existing townhome-style apartments there. The name of those, of that subject property or the townhomes that are there, townhome apartments that are there is Mandalay Villas. What they intend to do is to extend these existing luxury townhome-style apartments that are part of the planned development also. And the two conditions are number six and number seven from a previous hearing in two thousand and thirteen. And the, those respective conditions read as follows, as they are currently written. Twenty-six point nine-eight acres on the east boundary of the property south of the above-mentioned C-two property will be zoned C-three. And, and that's number six. And number seven reads currently, the remaining thirty-five point three-five acres of the property, which is located along the south property line, will be zoned RM under the RM densities and provisions in effect on March thirty-first, nineteen ninety-seven. And under sturdy buffer of twenty feet shall be located along the southern property line where the RM zone property abuts property zone for single-family residential use. In order for the applicant, pardon my pause. In order for the applicant to achieve what they're requesting, they will need conditions number six and seven to read as follows in order to, in order to expand the multifamily pod. Condition number six should read, ten point eight-nine acres on the east boundary of the property south of the above-mentioned C-two property will be zoned C-three. The remaining fifty-one point four-four acres of the property, which is located along the south property line, will be zoned RM. The maximum number of units shall be five hundred and forty. And the under sturdy buffer of twenty feet shall be located along the southern property line where the RM property abuts property zone for single-family residential uses. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Dante?
Number seven, condition number seven says the maximum number of units shall be five hundred and forty. How many are already there? Because I know this is already zoned residential there. How many is already there? Do you know?
I'm gonna, yes, I'm gonna, let me place a site plan on there over here so you can kind of see as I talk. Currently, there exist approximately three hundred units in Mandalay Villas. And so what this means is that the limit of both Mandalay combined with the potentially extended multifamily pod would be five hundred and forty total. So what that would limit them to is a maximum of additional two hundred and forty units. Now, with respect to that, that site or those two, two parcels and pods being engineered, that could be plus or minus.
I have another question. This has been on the books since nineteen ninety-nine. Is that correct?
In one way or another, in some shape, form, or fashion, this particular property has come to the Board of Commissioners nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand and one. I want to say two thousand and five and two thousand and thirteen. So it's been quite some time and a lot of back and forth.
Any more questions from the board? This is a public hearing.
Dante, back when this property was originally zoned, was, was it already RM?
Considering how properties start out, more than likely it was our base zoning district, and somehow there was some process or rezoning of the property to a multifamily-type zoning. This property is, and counsel, please stop me if I am, need to hand this over to you, but there is litigation regarding this property or surrounding the subject property that remanded it back to the county and wished the applicant requested, I think for C-three, they were given C-two, and that's its current state.
So it's still C-two right now?
Those two particular parcels or the pods are designated as C-two. But the entire development is zoned PD, planned development, which allows for a mixture of uses.
Any more questions? This time, I'm gonna ask the applicant or his representative to please approach the podium. Mr. Dillard, would you state your name for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Doug Dillard with Percy Freeze and Torgelson. And, and we represent Tim Jones, and Tim is here with, with me. As you have suspected, this property has a good, a good bit of history. We've been in litigation over the years with it. Went to Supreme Court back in the late nineties. Came back. We got a mixed use approved. It's been developed. And we came in two thousand and thirteen to try to get this parcel zoned residential. It was denied. We subsequently filed a lawsuit, and it's currently pending in court. And our purpose here tonight is to try to come up with a use that's gonna, gonna provide some resolution to that. Is, if you're familiar with the area, I'll put that up there, Tim. If you're familiar with the area, you know that there's been a lot of development around this property. Originally was a hundred and twenty-nine acres. And, and so the, the two pieces that are undeveloped are the commercial pieces that really have, have no market. If it could have been developed, they would have sure done it. And, and so only as a result of those market conditions with the residential toward Jonesboro Road, the Mandalay Apartments to the rear, we think that, that an extension of comparable properties as, as the Mandalay Apartments would be appropriate. What we are suggesting is a, an attached multifamily villa with garages and- Go through some of these pictures there, Tim. Got that here? Yeah, just see, just move through them. So we've given you a packet, too. If you wanna just thumb through the packet, but- Here, come to my mic.
The, we'd be on both sides of the road that goes into Mandalay behind Kaiser, Florida Core, and beside Ashley Furniture and some other commercial. It's several rows back from Jonesboro Road. But both sides would be gated. The, the units, nothing would be a multiple story, be a two-story. You wouldn't have any three, four-story apartments. Over half of them will have garages. And this will be probably one of your most high-end apartment complexes. And I would like to mention, we developed, me and a, a local developer here in the county, we developed Mandalay and built it as one of the nicer apartment complexes in the county. And it's gonna be a Mandalay-type product. It's gonna be a high-end gated, very well landscaped, if you can go through a few of those pictures, Doug. It's gonna have a really nice swimming pool. We're gonna have a barbecue area out by it. If we can show you some of these pictures. The grills. There'll be, you know, really nice stone den. Tile floors out at the grill area. Have a nice swimming pool. Show them the gym. We'll have a real nice clubhouse with a workout facility. Oh, there it is. And we wanted this to be one of the, the highest-end multifamily developments in the county. And we're not out trying to attract any riffraff. The rent's gonna be higher than anything. You're gonna have people that come in here, typically younger professionals, and they're not wanting to live in some low, cheaper type thing. Majority of the people that live here will probably go on and buy a home. And people, people don't back up here. They either go up to a home or they, they leave or they stay. So this is something that we want to put in. It's very, very nice. And the landscaping, if you see some of the landscaping on these pictures, this is a complex that Mike Davis just completed within the past six months. And he, he does a lot of these around the country. And I went through the ones that he had just completed. I thought this was the nicest would look here now. It's down in South Texas, so I don't think we'll have all the palm trees, but it's gonna be nicely landscaped. If you look at the landscaping in there, that's, you don't have any miniature landscaping. We go out and put really nice landscaping. It won't be a budget. When we go in and build a thing, we'll have a budget on the pool and the units and you go on through, but landscaping won't have a budget. It's gonna be mature landscaping. We're gonna have it a, a covered area for the mail. I'm just trying to think of what all the, but it's- Yeah, it's gonna be nicest thing in the county. And one thing I do want to mention it- And one thing I do want to mention, it fits in, we're right in the middle of over a million square feet of retail, so people literally be able to walk, to eat, and shop from here. And if they happen to live in the city, or that go, you know, I mean, excuse me, work in the city or go to the airport, that, the Jonesboro Road exits the only one on the express lane where you can get on and off in the county. So it's, you know, you're not going to be impacting your road. And I'd also like to mention, I was just at State DOT last week, and the, the West Connector, they're telling me it'll be under construction within three years. And we tried to put a red light at this intersection and it didn't qualify. We were going to put it up, we tried several times, but what they're telling me, when they build that connector, they will put a red light. But you still can come in through the T-road there and get out with a red light. So it's not like you're going to back up traffic there.
Mr. Jones, would you state your names for the record? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Tim Jones.
Tim Jones, I'm sorry. And I live at one forty-four Beverly Road in Atlanta.
Thank you.
Just in conclusion, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we have twenty-eight conditions on this zoning. We're not asked but to change two of them, six and seven, as, as Dante has, has explained to you, which basically gives us two hundred, two hundred and thirty or forty additional units of residential. Ten acre still remains, still remains commercial, but it gives us an opportunity to have two hundred and forty additional units. And so we would ask that you approve it in accordance with the staff's analysis and that you modify conditions six and seven. And if, if it's, if it would please the Board, I'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal in the event there is opposition.
Counsel, I do have a question for you real quick. On the litigation that's going on right now, what are you asking for on this property? What zoning, what are we litigating about on this property?
Yeah, would, how many units are you going to get? Is that what you're saying?
We, we have a current litigation, correct?
In zoning litigation, you don't ask for a particular zoning, you just challenge the existing zoning. So the existing lawsuit alleges that the commercial zoning applicable to these properties is unconstitutional. You don't ask for the other zoning. You just ask to declare the existing zoning.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And one of the, one of the main things, I didn't understand the question, Ms. Chairman, is that in, in zoning litigation, you know, the property owner has the legal right to use this property for any lawful purpose, local government can regulate it based on a proper exercise of the police power. And in Georgia, one of the, one of the main issues that you try to determine is whether or not the property has reasonable economic value as currently zoned. All property has value, so it, it all has some value. But we submit to you that this property has been vacant and undeveloped now for over fifteen years, and we submit that it has no reasonable economic use as currently zoned. We know that it does have value if, if we can get it rezoned tonight. So that, that basically, and I, I join in what Patrick advised, that's, that's the correct law. But we're asking for six and seven, condition six and seven, that's it.
Okay. District Two has some questions for Dante. Dante, if you'd come back up, please.
Dante, this is, this, this is a lot, going back almost twenty years on this stuff that's been coming before. The twenty-eight conditions that are already here, I know that we can't amend those conditions that have already been approved for this area. But there were five hundred and forty that was approved, and if three hundred is already developed, where were the other two hundred and forty supposed to be?
They're asking to amend condition number seven to, to limit the total combined number of units to five forty. Mandalay Villas has three hundred, and let me place the map on the overhead so you can Between those two tracks where my pen is located, they will, they will be proposing the additional two hundred and forty units, plus or minus.
Yes, District Five.
Someone speak to the exterior of the structures, and also, what is, what's the price point per, per unit?
The, the exterior will be, we hadn't really picked. It'll probably be brick, could be stone, it'll all be hardy plank. We don't use any wood or vinyl or whatever on any of the exteriors. And the price points, we hadn't gone into the total design, but a two-bedroom, we probably start at about fourteen hundred a month. We'll have some three-bedrooms, of course, we'll have some one-bedrooms too.
There's twenty-eight conditions here, so they don't really get to decide. It says in nineteen of the twenty-eight, all buildings constructed on the property shall have a mixture of brick, rock, stucco, and cement fiber board. So I'm concerned about, there's a lot of good conditions that have been put in place here, and I don't see how they're going to build two hundred and forty units when they have to have a thirty-seven hundred square feet clubhouse, a junior-sized Olympic pool. I want to make sure that they understand that, I don't know how long it's been since you all read these conditions, but thirty-seven hundred square foot clubhouse, a junior-sized Olympic pool, two tennis courts, a children's playground, sidewalks that will adjoin these pods to the existing commercial area. I mean, it, it's high-end, definitely, but I want to make sure that we make sure that they're going to stick to these. And I want to state for a record, these conditions that the boards before us have already put in place.
We want to make it very clear that those, those twenty-six conditions remain in full force of effect, and we intend to comply with each and every one of them.
Okay, and we talked about villa-style, high-end condominiums, and, you know, those are the conditions that were put in place to guarantee that, so.
These are high-end villa-type multifamily units.
And it's supposed to be a gated community? How can we regulate that, Dante, to make sure it's not a gate that doesn't work, but that it's a gated community like Mandalay that's there?
Well, you're going to have two hundred and forty units that need to get in and out of there, so it's going to be, it's going to work.
All this is subject to engineering. I also want this engineered to see what will actually fit and meet the development requirements and regulations. Then at that time, we will know exactly the net amount of units that they will, will have.
Commissioner, I'd like to ask you clarify that these, these two parcels or the project on these parcels will have their own clubhouse, swimming pool, and tennis courts and playground. Is that, I just want to make sure that's the intent.
They won't have their each, so they'll each be gated, but there'll be a clubhouse and a pool on one side that they could all use.
So parcel A and B will have separate amenities from whatever amenities exist at Mandalay.
No, they'll share the same amenities but have separate gates.
But separate from Mandalay's.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make, make that clear. The new development, the new combined development will have its own.
No, it'll be, it'll be separate from Mandalay.
As described in the condition.
Right. Any more questions? Mr. Three.
On condition six, where the property is going to go from C2 to C3, what's your plan for that parcel?
Well, we are, we are, the balance of the property, you mean, C2 and C3?
Looks like we're going from C2 to C3.
Well, we're currently developing. If y'all approve this, this will be the multifamily. We just built this building, we built this, and this only leaves this and these two pieces. And we're, we hope to have that under construction this year.
You got to show it, show it to them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even forget, remember that thing.
Dante, answer that, because I don't think we're changing from C2 to C3. Is it already changed?
This condition addresses the acreage. It already exists stating that the property that, that is C2 is now C3.
It was already, you get.
It's already C3. But this condition amendment will, it's only changing the acreage.
So the zoning has already been done. The only thing we're doing is, is take, is adding to the already existing RM.
Correct. It's reducing the amount of acreage for, from this C3 pod to add, add it to the multifamily and extend that pod.
But for what it's worth, that's over with this piece. When we do this, we'll have this started. Everything that's left that I own, that, right here, it'll be under development this year. There won't be anything else from, you know, me to come back. Just conditions over twenty years and the economy has changed while we came back up here for some modifications.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you. This is a public hearing regarding MC seventeen dash oh one. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of ten minutes to present their oppositions. Those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Casey Sturm. I'm an environmental land use and zoning attorney with the law firm of Wiseman. We are located, let me make sure I get this right, because I am new with the firm. We are at One Alliance Center, fourth floor, thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred Lenox Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three two six. And my number, if you need to reach me, is four oh four nine two six four six three zero. I represent TPG Mandalay LLC, which is the owner of the Mandalay Apartments. So the, the apartments that you see right down here. I'm here before you this evening on their behalf, asking for you all to oppose this modification request. And there are a number of concerns that I want to address with you. I submitted to you via email earlier this afternoon, a copy of an opposition letter as well as a reservation of constitutional objections. I have extra copies with me this evening if anyone should need a copy. Happy to provide it to you. Let me give you a little bit of background. I do understand that this property as a whole has been involved in a lengthy history and a long litigation battle as well. What I do want to remind all the Commissioners is that regardless of that, anytime we seek to modify or change conditions that are applicable to this property, we still have to comply not only with the local ordinance, but with state law requiring zoning modifications. So let's talk about, a little bit about the history and what's involved here. My clients, Mandalay Villas or TPG Mandalay LLC, purchased this property October two thousand and sixteen, so that's just late last year. They made a significant investment in this property, spending over forty million dollars on this purchase. They're already putting in an extra three point one million dollars for capital improvements. They're upgrading facilities, they're upgrading the individual residential units. That's a significant investment in this area. And that investment was based on the land use regulations in place for this master plan development, which restricted residential communities to only the Mandalay Villas. So they have significant concerns with what is being attempted at this point in time to change these conditions from commercial to additional residential development, when that was not what was presented when this master plan was developed. I understand economic conditions change, so do my clients. Nevertheless, the litigation and the issues that are pending right now don't necessarily support a change from commercial to residential. I want to be clear that my understanding of the lawsuit that is pending right now is a debate between different commercial districts, a C3 versus a C2, not a debate that we think you ought to go back to a residential. So what they're coming for, before you tonight is a total change. The concern I have and that my clients have is that sufficient notice of that was not provided. The county and the applicant have an obligation to ensure that adequate notice of a rezoning change, including a modification to a master development plan such as this, is adequate. And the purpose of that is to ensure that we afford the community a meaningful opportunity not only to review and assess these proposals, but to comment and participate and raise concerns that may exist. So when we look at the notice for these, for this rezoning, while notice was put out in the newspaper, it was posted on a sign, and there was a mailing put out, we contend that that notice did not meet the substantive procedural requirements under both state law and under the local ordinance. And that can be fatal to any granting of a rezoning. As you all probably recognize, I think one of the issues that may have been involved at some point in time does involve procedural deficiencies and the ability to challenge those in court. So the procedural deficiencies that are present here is we've got public notice that was mailed out. It failed to include any indication of the specific property being subject to rezone or change in conditions. It failed to address the, the specific zoning change that was being sought, the purpose for that, and the timing of this hearing. My client who received the mailed notice, while it indicates that it was sent on the thirtieth, thirtieth of March, it does, it was not received by my client until Thursday of last week, raising some concerns as to whether it actually went out when posted. Regardless of that, it only had a link on there. It did not tell them what the change was that was being requested, who was requesting it, and when it was going to happen. When they contacted Henry County, they were told that this issue could not be discussed with them because it was a subject of litigation. So they weren't given any information about what was being considered. The sign that was posted on the property merely referenced that it was a commercial to a residential or multifamily change. The county has a number of commercial zoning districts. It has a number of multifamily residential districts. When notice is put out there, it has to give the community a meaningful opportunity to engage in that assessment. And so it needs to be something more than commercial to multifamily. It needs to tell them, look, we're going from C3 to an RM, or we're going from a C2 to an RM. So we contend the notice here is deficient and will be a fatal flaw to any approval of the request this evening. In addition to that, there are procedural requirements regarding the application that is submitted. In this particular instance, it appears that all that was submitted by the applicant was a single-page letter with one sentence saying, we want to modify our prior zoning from commercial to residential, and we want to build it in a similar fashion as Mandalay Apartments. What is increasingly concerning about not only the notice problems, is that there has been no discussion between Mr. Jones, who developed Mandalay Apartments, and my client. If in fact, they are seeking to develop something similar, you would think, particularly given the zoning changes and the recent purchase, that a discussion would have occurred. So we have concerns regarding that. We have concerns that in fact, the application that was submitted doesn't meet the county's own requirements as far as the information required to be in that application, as well as the supporting documentation. Thirdly, and as you will see in the letter that I submitted to you all, there is a criteria for consideration that this board has to be looking at when considering whether to approve or deny the request. And as we go through even the staff's own analysis of this, almost every single point criteria for consideration weighs against approval of this request. The staff did not submit a specific opinion or representation or recommendation on this request for modification, as happens in many instances. I will submit to you that there are a number of concerns when we look at the amount of traffic already on Jonesboro Road in this area, and we're seeking to add two hundred and forty more residential units at an intersection that is not serviced by a light. There's going to be significant traffic congestion, there's safety concerns, not only for vehicular traffic, but because we all are talking about a community where we're trying to embrace walkability, pedestrian access. So we've got concerns in regards to whether there is adequate safety measures and traffic installations to be able to support what they're asking. There's also a concern that the way that this is being presented and the adjustment to the modification seems to be looking at taking Mandalay Apartments in addition to the property they're trying to rezone and grouping it all together to say, we're going to have five hundred and forty apartment or units now. The problem with that is that when you look at what they're doing, the density on the two properties that they want to develop now to add two hundred and forty units exceeds what is authorized by your own code, even under the residential district. So it's improper for them, particularly on a property that they do not own, to try to incorporate that acreage to suggest that their density requirements are being met. So we have significant concerns about what is being presented as what they're developing on this property and whether that can actually go forward. There is also, I understand this is preliminary stages for a rezoning, but there's been no indication that there is available sewerage for this property. There's also significant concerns about what the drainage would be. Is there adequate stormwater detention? Where is that stormwater detention? Because of course, that's got to be accommodated on-site as well. I appreciate, I appreciate the Commission's time this evening. And again, on behalf of my client, I urge that you deny this request this evening.
Thank you Counsel. This time, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
My name is Josh Levine. I have lived in this county my entire life. I'm a small business owner. I own four establishments within a five or seven-minute drive from this proposed multifamily high-end villa. I am a very big proponent in getting this project going, because I own a high-end dog grooming business, that these are the kind of clients that I need for a weekly, bi-weekly, or a monthly repeat service. These are the people that we target in our marketing for the Henry County area. And this will make it a lot easier to be successful in that business. I own a restaurant on Jodico Road, which is literally five minutes from this establishment, that could bring four to eight hundred more people monthly into my establishment to increase our revenue. I own a general contracting company as well on Jodico Road, that I feel this would possibly gain some sort of services that we render in the future as far as maintenance. We could possibly win pressure washing contracts and so forth. So, please vote yes for the rezoning, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. State your names for the record, please.
Clayton Carr, Locust Grove District One. I'd like to request to the Board Commissioners for them to allow additional opposition time to hear from any Henry County citizens and residents that might be in the audience to speak in opposition to this case. Thank you.
Let me finish this and we'll get back to it.
My name is Larry Maury, and when I first, I wanted to live in a, a place in a live, work, and play community, which is what I designed. And I tried to live in Mandalay Apartments when I first came to Henry County. But the problem was they had dogs that barked all night, so that ended that. But this is exactly what you want in a live-work community and play community, because you've got the shopping and, and all the hotels and restaurants, and you want the kind of development that he's bringing. High-end, and it backs up to that. It's a mixed-use development, which is what is a new hot button. So, I highly recommend that you approve that. It's in the right location, it's the right quality, and if, if county makes sure it's done right, it'll be a good development. It's good for the county.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Please state your name for the record.
Carl Swenson. Like Mr. Maury, I'm, I'm in agreement. I, I think this is a perfect location for this type of development. The infrastructure obviously is something we're going to have to deal with there. I don't know if you've dealt with the, the sewage or the water runoff, but the type of high-end development that this is, is designed to give us is much better suited here than Points West, which is where Mr. Jones has tried to put some higher-density stuff in before. So, I'm in agreement. I think this is, this is a good deal for, for Henry County and for, and for Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I'm going to conclude that part. Does any Commissioner have any wants to hear from the opposition for one or two minutes? It's not supportive. This time, would the applicant please come back up? And Commissioner Clemens has some question for Dante real quick, if you'll give her a second.
Dante, Ms. Strum has made a couple of accusations in regards to this county, and that's why I'm elected to protect this county. She made some accusations that we did not comply with local ordinance, we did not comply with state ordinances, that we as a county have some procedural deficiencies. She has accused of not providing sufficient notice of the modification. She has said that we did not address the sewage issues and those facility issues on this property. And she's also accused staff of not giving their opinion because something is wrong with this, and I really need you to address this for our citizens before we go any further with this.
Clemens, first and foremost, Georgia's zoning procedures law requires that we post the property in a conspicuous area and take a timestamp, time, date-stamped photo, which is on the overhead. It also requires that we send notice through our legal organ, which is the Henry Herald. And both notices, the time, the location, the type of request, what they're requesting to go from and to, are indicated. Secondly, with respect to the sewer question, what was that Commissioner Clemens?
That we, yeah, the sewer.
Sewer.
Whether we have sewer lines, whether we have the right sewer and retention ponds to facilitate this, to carry this facility.
For the record, and Patrick stop me if I am stepping, I live in Mandalay Villas. I've been there for three years. It's on sewer. And the requirement is within two thousand feet of a sewer line, you have to tap in. As you can tell, it is very close to sewer, and they will be required to tap into sewer. With respect to staff's opinion, when it comes to modifications to conditions, the conditions of zoning are placed on a property by the respective Board of Commissioners. Our code states that in the event that an applicant decides to modify those conditions, that they go back to the board given, that implemented the conditions. So, when it comes to a modification to conditions request, we process the application, we make an objective, write an objective staff report, answer all the criteria points, and then we render the decision to the Board of Commissioners. You have two resolutions in your book tonight, both to approve and both, and one to deny. So, that decision rests with, with the Board of Commissioners. Now, if I am asked to give my objective or give my professional opinion with respect to this proposed development, my professional opinion would be I have no objection to it, considering its location and proximity to the commercial development, it being part of a planned development, a planned development allowing a mixture of uses, the infrastructure, the location and proximity to infrastructure, and so on. And when then, with the upcoming update of our comprehensive land use plan and future land use map, you can anticipate that our higher densities will be shifted towards the interstate, I-75, which is where you can expect, or that's, that's where you would see your higher densities. And as you go further out to our rural areas, you would see a lower density.
Thank you. And also, there was a comment about the traffic. I know that one of the, Mr. Swanson said something about the traffic. This is on Jonesboro Road, and I wish we had someone from DOT here to talk about the expansion of Jonesboro Road. And I know that we're in the process of expanding Jonesboro Road, where the state isn't. Can you talk a little bit about that expansion, Sherri?
The Georgia Department of Transportation actually has a project that has been on the books for a number of years. It's the Jonesboro Road widening project, and it's my understanding that that project is set to move in twenty twenty, or at least that's when the construction is set to start. As you all know, there's some historical artifacts and historic structures that we've tried to work with the state, state on in terms of determining, one, if those are historical, but two, to make sure that we don't have any impacts in terms of that road going forward. But that project is on the books, and that is something that the Georgia Department of Transportation will be managing.
And I would also just state for the record that I'm looking out into the audience, and there's several members of District Two that live within three miles, two miles of this property that did not get up in opposition of this particular project, because they know that the two bedrooms, when I called today, in this project ranged from fourteen fifty to seventeen hundred dollars a month in the existing apartments that's there. So, when we talk about high-end, I just want to make sure that these conditions that we've set forth, that the applicant knows that they have to stick with these conditions to make sure that we get the high-end quality town home development that is stated in these conditions. And I want them to state that for the record about those conditions, that they are, understand where they are.
Yeah, and I, I asked to reserve a couple of minutes maybe for, for rebuttal, and I'll, I will confirm as a part of my rebuttal. Ms. Commissioner, absolutely, we will comply with those remaining conditions. And I think as Mr. Jones said, this is anticipated to be a high-end facility, and it'll have a pool and a clubhouse and, and all of those things. It's going to have two sections to it, which will share those common, common facilities, but it will be available to all residents, and it will be gated. So, we fully intend to comply with each and every one of those remaining twenty-six conditions, assuming we can get six and seven modified tonight. Regarding the opposition that Ms. Strum put forward, and I, I handed to you, along with the handout of the photographs of the site, our constitutional notice relative to the existing conditions and why we thought it was important to change them. You know, it's pretty obvious that they bought this property in October, they don't want the competition. Well, I submit that it's just the opposite, that the presence of this high-quality development is going to be an enhanced, it's going to be a benefit to them, it's going to create and stabilize a market that is not only needed, but is existing in this, in this community. Secondly, they don't have standing. You know, to be, to have standing to challenge the zoning, you've got to show that you're in a grieve party. And that means that you've got to have, you've got to have damages that's suffered by you that's not suffered by the community as a whole. We've heard no number. We did, they, they paid several million, they think that's going to lose, they're going to lose a few million. That's not sufficient to put you on notice, to give them standing, to, to challenge your decision, and they can't do that for the first time in Superior Court. Relative to compliance with the criteria, Dante and his staff have done a very good job of analyzing the criteria. This is a modification, though, and I think your standards under modification are different in the application that was filed by, by Mr. Jones prior to our getting involved, was sufficient to put note, put public on notice relative to the anticipated change. The advertising was done in accordance with zoning procedures law, in accordance with your, with your ordinance. The traffic, traffic for residential is going to, assuming we had a use for the commercial, a traffic for a residential use is going to be far less than traffic for any non-residential use. So, so while we know Jonesboro Road needs to be improved, we tried to get a light at the intersection there, we could not justify the warrants, but Tim has been meeting with, with staff and with DOT, and they're excited about what's going to be happening to, to, to Jonesboro Road. And in clu, closing, relative to the utilities, that's a permitting function. You know, we can't, like Dante said, we've got sewer available, you know, assuming you've got capacity, we got to, we got to connect to it. Same thing with water. But that's a permitting function. You really don't deny zoning based on, on that type of infrastructure, because you zone it, then you determine the demand, then you determine the capacity, then you, then you, then you go forward with the permitting of it. So, for all those reasons, we think the, the opposition is not meritorious. We think it's a spurious attempt to try to limit the, the competition that they obviously don't want, and we would ask that you approve this, and of course, with the staff's recommendation. Thanks.
Do you have any comments?
Could I mention, mention one thing? You know, the previous owners, we sold it to the previous owners in oh eleven. They knew we were coming up here to zone it, I talked with them. They didn't have one nadel problems. And I don't know how this came about, this young lady coming up here at the last minute, "Got a picture of a zoning sign that was taken this evening, I could show you." It's at the front door just about a Mandalay. They knew it was going to be zoned. They knew when they bought it was going to be zoned. And also, the sewer, I ran the sewer line from the interstate. All that sewer line that comes, that feeds all that commercial, I paid to put it in there, we got capacities in there. The detention she was talking about, their detention goes into the ponds I own. I built it for that whole track, it was designed by the county. And some of these things she was saying up here, she just kind of, I guess did this in a hurry, didn't know what she was talking about. But she made a lot of false statements about what's going on and about where they, if they didn't know it, they sure should have known it. But I think they knew it, and just somebody at the last minute in their corporate said, "Oh, we got to, maybe we just don't need this for competition." But the, the previous owners were good with it and happy with it and realized the activity breeded activity, so.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions for staff? We don't. No rebuttal. Any more questions for staff? This time, I can conclude the public hearing. Like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve this modification with the following two conditions being amended to say, number four, the minimum, oh no, that's a different one, hold on a second. Dante, put the six and seven back up there for me.
Okay, I, I have them. Go ahead, state them for the record, and then I can.
Condition number six shall read as follows. Ten point eight nine acres on the east boundary of the property, south of the above mentioned C-two property, excuse me, will be zoned C-three. Condition number seven, the remaining fifty-one point four four acres of the property which is located, I'm sorry, the remaining, yeah, fifty-one point four four acres of the property which is located along the south property line will be zoned RM. The maximum number of units shall be five hundred and forty, and the understirred buffer of twenty feet shall be located along the southern property line where the RM zone properties are, but property is owned for single-family residential uses.
I make the motions to amend the modification for zoning for this property with the following two commission, two conditions that Dante has stated.
We have a motion from the second district. Do I have a second? Second from the fifth. Any comments or discussion among the board? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Next was public hearing comp AM fifteen dash oh four, and that has been postponed. Public hearing RZ one five twelve, Rayco Greenwood Business Park, that has been postponed as well. This time, we're going to have county manager comments, this discussion only. Comment to implement projects for which funding was applied during the two thousand and seventeen Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, project solicitation. County manager and Stacy Jordan will be presenting.
Good evening Board. The Atlanta Regional Commission announced a call for projects to allow local jurisdictions to apply for federal funding for local transportation improvements through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. A R C does require local commitment of matching funds. Staff is proposing to apply for five projects. One of these projects would be a study, and the other four projects would be widening projects. The study project would be a freight cluster plan, which would be centered around exit two sixteen. One of the widening projects would be Highway eighty-one east of McDonough. Another widening project would be Rock Quarry Road. Another widening project would be a project that we intend to term East Atlanta Road, Rock Quarry Road Connector Widening. And finally, another project would be called Jodico Widening, which would be for a segment of Jodico Road west of I-75. And these projects are not listed in any particular order, but they all require a twenty percent match. Two of the widening projects, the match would be handled through our SPOSS program. The others would require budgeted funds, and because these projects would be twenty eighteen, perhaps twenty nineteen, there's an opportunity to budget for these matching funds, should the Atlanta Regional Commission actually approve our applications. And because the Atlanta Regional Commission requires a resolution of support from the local elected officials, we need to receive this resolution from you before the application deadline of May the seventeenth. So, for this reason, we're having discussion tonight, and we'll bring the resolution back before this board for a vote on May the second. And the only thing that I would like to add at this point is because the freight study includes a segment of unincorporated Henry County, as well as a segment of the city of McDonough and the city of Locust Grove, we've proposed that the county and the city of McDonough and the city of local, Locust Grove share the required match. And last night, both the city council of McDonough and the city council of Locust Grove both voted to approve resolutions of support to provide the matching funds as indicated here. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone, any have any questions for? I actually have a question. For the sake of the constituents, what is a freight cluster plan?
The Atlanta Regional Commission has identified several areas around the Atlanta region, and one of the areas that they have identified that would be acceptable for a freight study is the area centered around exit two-sixteen and extending almost in a, a perfect circle from the center of McDonough to include the center of Locust Grove and points west of the interstate. What we would propose is a study area that would be the same as the proposed boundaries of the Community Improvement District that is being studied for this area.
Okay.
The study is to provide a coordinated set of projects, a list of projects that would be prioritized, that, that we could, uh, do in a coordinated fashion. It would include increasing turning radii on strategic intersections. For example, the intersection of Highway forty-two and one-fifty-five. It would involve the new interchange that's being proposed in the area of Bethlehem Road. So it's a very broad study, but it would give us a, a prioritized project list.
That includes, um, semi-truck parking lots along I-seventy-five?
It, it needs to include freight truck staging areas, or perhaps simply a recommendation for a policy for brand-new big-box warehousing and distribution. For example, at this point, if a truck comes to a warehouse and it's, it's early, there may not be a place for that truck to wait, and we don't want these trucks to wait on the side of the highway.
So can you describe what that parking lot would look like and where it would be located?
This is something that the freight study should tell us. For example, the state is proposing a truck-only lane between Macon and exit two-sixteen. It's, it's gonna dump out within our study area. Would the truck staging area be somewhere along this northbound route, or would it be once these trucks exit? The, the, the route, we don't know, but that's something that we need this study to tell us.
Is, is there an opportunity to, uh, withdraw Henry County from that particular portion of the study and have them target, uh, butts or spaulding for those semi-truck parking lots?
We, we do not need to include particular items in this study if the board directs us in that direction.
And as a note, just to the board, this will be, this resolution will be brought back before the board, um, in the next meeting, May second. That being said, I do echo what Commissioner Holmes is, uh, discussing. Not sure that Henry County is the, uh, tractor-trailer capital of, uh, Georgia. Not sure really, but that's what we want. Um, so that, that's something we probably need to have a discussion about it for the time. Do any other commissioners have any questions or concerns at this time? District two?
I just wanna be clear, because we're kinda talking around, what this is about is, and I, I think this will kinda clarify a couple of things, this T I P. project, um, that the state is looking for, the state is also looking for a location to create truck stops, um, along seventy-five. And it has come to us, and I just, I mean, you may not know about this, staff, but, uh, they're looking for a location to create truck stops, and I know it has come to some emails to the commissioners, and, uh, I'm going to be transparent, I don't want truck stops in Henry County. Uh, truck stops do not bring economic development, uh, we're not the place for truck stops, we have enough trucks here already, um, and anything that looks like we will be a target to say, "Henry County is great for truck stops, we're not great for truck stops." So I don't know how the other commissioners feel about this, but as we need to go further and...
The email stated that there were gonna be truck parking lots, not truck stops.
Yes.
So I think that may be, I, I've never seen a tr- a semi-truck parking lot, can you explain what that is?
This is something that the Atlanta Regional Commission has presented as something that's needed in the Atlanta region. And so it may, if the board directs us, it would be something to include in a freight study, but if it's something that the board does not want to be addressed in this study, it certainly does not have to be addressed in this study.
I'm, I'm not in support of using county funds to become a truck stop, truck rest, truck anything other than what we already have, so I'm not, I can't support using county funds. Now, anybody else that wants to can, but I just wanna make it publicly known that I, I cannot support that.
I agree, we, let's, here's, gotta jump up a little bit on that, I think we need to support them.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
This time we're gonna have public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, and you will be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. First on the list is Mr. Bill Tony. How are you doing tonight, Mr. Tony?
Before we start the clock, I'd like to ask something, please. Uh, I'd like to ask y'all for a vote, because, uh, if I need some extra time, I'd like to get it up to fifteen minutes, and I'd like to ask y'all for a vote.
Does any commissioner want to extend Mr. Tony's time?
I'd like to vote seven. Water Authority.
I'd say let's give Mr. Tony out tonight, at least for this Water Authority, maybe we can be done with this for the last time. If you all would just allow him to talk about the Water Authority, as long as you're not throwing jabs at the commissioners.
Let me tell you something, and I'll be honest with you.
Let's, 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 let's see what they say.
Let's get on with this motion.
Tell of this lady an apology.
We, we have a, uh, a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do I have a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Tony, you have fifteen minutes, please let me set the clock.
Again, uh... Stephanie, would you give these out to them, please? Again, I think that y'all owe this lady an apology, y'all didn't let, give her an opportunity to, for a rebuttal on that other guy. Just my thoughts. I believe in being transparent, open, and, uh, you know... Okay. Mr. Lindy Farmer, salary three hundred thousand, six hundred twenty-four fifty-two, highest paid, I have not found anybody higher paid in the county than him. Governor Nathan Deal makes a hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-nine, Casey Kegel makes ninety-one thousand, six hundred nine, President Trump makes four hundred thousand, Vice President makes two thirty, two hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred. Okay, we have, excuse me, Mr. Lindy Farmer's general manager of the Water Authority. I've called him numerous times, he's always out, he's never there. I've left messages, he won't call me back. I would like to have a meeting, sit down and, and discuss some stuff with him. I've gone by the office, he's not there. Now, I don't get where this man ever works. I've asked for simple, simple things, and they, they put an attorney on me that, uh, wants to charge me seven hundred dollars. Now, from what I understand, they're giving out bonuses over there. I don't have any idea for what. So I asked for a, uh, freedom of information on bonuses, which, that should be a simple, simple thing. They won't call me back, they just sent an, an attorney. I'd like to know how much they paid the attorney to, to do it. Seven hundred and thirty-five dollars they want for a little bit of, an accounting information. All right, I would imagine it costs, an attorney sent me, sent me this, Justin Cornell, how much he charges, he probably charged five hundred bucks to send this letter to me. So I don't feel like I should be paying for an attorney. The county, uh, the, the Water Authority, they, they don't need any money. They, they bring in their own revenue. They get two mils, two mils of our tax, which we need. We need for our police department, we need for precincts, we need for a lot of things other than water parks. Now, these water parks are, they're sucking all of our money dry, looks like, and I don't even know if Mr. Holmes has got enough money to finish it now. Gary Barham says that, you know, that we, um, it wasn't gonna cost but like six or seven million bucks, and I don't even know where we at now, we're in a mess with that. So, but I have a solution for this. What can you do? You can do the right thing. You can propose a referendum to stop the two mils going to the Water Authority. They, they have plenty of money, they're very self-sufficient, they don't need our money. Ms. Clemmons, you know, I, when me and you talked before you were elected, you were gonna be open, honest, transparent, and you wanted people in the government. You, you, you praised people for being involved in government. That, you know, that's what we're doing. You go and rename an airport, and you didn't even have a public here. You had, you didn't, I mean, that would've been to me the thing to do. If you're gonna rename my airport, my county airport, take away my county name, why wouldn't you have done that? I'm curious. Why wouldn't you have had people to get up and speak for it and against it? You know, I don't, I don't get it. You have got this thing about Atlanta. We're not Atlanta. I don't wanna be Atlanta. I don't know if you had the right intentions or what to start with, I don't know what your intentions were, but I, I'll have to say that I'm kinda disappointed in you. I talked to you before you were elected, and I don't think you're the same person. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
This time we'll hear from Mr. Carl Swinson. Subject is Fairview Park. Mr. Swinson, how are you doing this evening?
Hi, Carl Swinson, I'm Hunky Dory. Hope you all are doing fine, too. Um, you know, the thing that I've been trying to deal with here is to get some help for a couple of, uh, a couple of unintended consequences, and it has to do with the, uh, Fairview Park, of course. I don't know which park, the Splash Park, whatever you wanna call it. Um, let's see if you can pick, yeah, you can pick that up. Look, we had a, uh, we had a rain here, the National Weather Service says it was a total of three point four-four inches, which, um, pretty healthy rain, and I kinda told you guys about this, uh, at the last meeting, to expect it. And at that rain, during that rain, I went to the park to check out what was going on, and it was a mess. It was a real mess. Not so much for the park. Yeah, there's some, there's some issues of puddling and things like that, but it's the water runoff that's coming off of that thing. There are two places where that water is running off. One of them is, uh, up here in this tree line, and the other one, you can see right through here, okay? The one that's the line, that one was, um, above calf de- depth, and went about, I wanna say about eight to ten feet across, maybe twelve, in certain areas as it flowed down to the neighbor's property, but coming in from that tree line that I pointed out initially, it comes down and, um, it's not quite as big, but still a lot of water. Now, why do I say this? Say this because, um, Mr. Brown, God rest his soul, had a meeting with Mr. Burkhalder, and that's, this was prior to this thing being built. And Mr. Burkhalder assured him that he wouldn't get an ounce of extra water off of this project. It was a lie. They, they're getting inundated. And that's, that's gonna have to be resolved, or maybe you're just gonna have to buy out, uh, Ms. Brown, who's taken over the property, or my friend Willie, who's, I think, trying to buy it from Ms. Brown. Whatever, that is, you're ruining that pasture land, that's gone now. Silt, sediment is being deposited there, and God only knows what, when you start putting the anti-vegetation stuff in that, uh, that pond, guess where it's going? In her pasture. Not a good thing. And speaking of Mr. Burkhalder, I was really upset, because during that rain, when I was there, he showed up. He did, he wanted to take a look at it. I watched him drive in through the entrance, and then drive completely around the walking path. Drive it, that's a walking path, it's not meant for vehicles. He was too darn lazy to get out of his truck. Is that the kinda person we want to represent us? Ooh, or to take care of us? I don't think so, but when he drove all the way around there, I, by that time I had gotten to my truck, and I was driving over towards him and tried to hail him down, I didn't know who he was, I'd like to see him and talk to him. He just drove walk, right on by, didn't wanna stop. He turned around and went up to the northwest corner of the property, and he was driving around there to see the other mud puddle. Kinda upset me, so I blocked his progress when he was leaving, asking him who he was when he rolled down his window, that I, then I could see it was Mr. Burkhalder, but he didn't have anything to say, and I said, "Have a nice day." But that's rude. And it's rude to the people of Henry County to take your vehicle and drive that. If he's afraid of getting wet, he shouldn't have gone out in the first place. I'm pretty sure that if you guys, any of you, wanted to get a feel for what was going on, you'd put a raincoat on or take an umbrella, but you wouldn't take the chance of tearing up this very expensive walk path. Keep that in mind, folks, because he's the guy that's, uh, the project manager for this. So you gotta do something, it's not gonna go away. We're gonna have more rain.
Thank you, Mr. Swinson.
Chair.
Yes.
I just wanna ask the county manager if, um, if we've addressed this as accounting, and if so, are we having issues with the detention pond and flooding?
Uh, Commissioner Holmes, there has been several, um, inquiries made from some of the residents in the area, and about two or three months ago, we did have an AS-Built survey completed by our, um, S P L O S. department to determine some of the runoff issues that are going on. Um, as you all may be aware, the site has not been completely stabilized, so there are gonna be some runoff issues. But what we will do tonight is I will get Mr. Swinson's contact information, and myself and Mr. Johnson and Mr. Burkhalter will meet out on the site to determine what the issues are. I know he's been to one or two meetings, or at least the last two or three meetings, and I thought we had gotten it resolved, but apparently we have not. So let me get Mr. Swinson's information, and I will follow up with him this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more comments? Board? All right. At this time, gonna hear from Mr. Larry Moore. Good evening, Mr. Moore, how are you?
Good evening. I, too, would like for, Mr. D., uh, since you're my commissioner, I would like for my time to be extended to fifteen minutes, and I may take all it, but probably won't, but I at least need more than five, and I would ask, uh, for a vote on that, please, and to have that as we move forward.
Does any commissioner wish to hear Mr. Moore for more than five minutes?
I would like to hear subject matters.
Mr. Moore, I'm gonna second that, because we did it for Mr. Tony.
Sure.
I'm gonna second that motion, because we did it for Mr. Tony.
But what, what is your subject, what's your subject?
Oh, the subject matter, I'm sorry, I thought you meant...
Yeah, no, what is your subject matter, Mr. Moore?
I'm sorry, apologize.
Sir.
What, what are you gonna be, what are you gonna be talking about?
Talking about insurance. Talking about insurance.
I will, I'll go along with that.
We have a motion.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second that, Mr. Maury.
Thank you.
All in favor? Call for vote. All opposed?
Thank you.
One second, let me read this.
A couple of years ago, Henry County was spending about a million and a half dollars on commissions for insurance. A gentleman come from the Board of Education and came to the county commission, and sat on one of these chairs. Over the years, the commission was negotiated down, I think it's about a half a million dollars now. Is that right, Ms. Sheeran? Anyway, we'll take it as it is. Last year, at the last minute, the same thing happened that happened yesterday. All of a sudden, we had to have a vote. We couldn't postpone it thirty days and talk about it, we had to have a vote that day, that was a year ago. For that year, we operated without a commission contract, even though he was paid over a half a million dollars. This gentleman does not open up the bids to all the major carriers, and one, for instance, is United, and the reason is because United does not pay a commission. It has to be negotiated from you guys. And I believe I can truthfully say in this meeting yesterday, his ineptness at insurance and policy was evident when the finance manager and county manager had to basically explain what that was all about, because yesterday, we had to have that same, it's got to be signed today. Can't wait, it's got to be done today. Well, Patton said, General Patton said, "If you fail to plan, you plan to fail," and our insurance company, our insurance service for our county, there's two men right yonder, when your insurance goes up thirty percent this year, don't you, sir?
Please address the floor.
Don't blame nobody but the mess that we got with insurance, and I asked you gentlemen and ladies yesterday to hold off on this insurance mess, for just because what we're in. I brought a guy here to look at the insurance, and I'll gladly bring him to meet with you face to face if you want to, and he will tell you just what kind of mess you got in the insurance. There's insurance money leaving Henry County going to Tennessee on commissions. I got two prominent people in Henry County that said they'll meet with the FBI anytime they get here. I'm going to ask you commissioners to invite the FBI in, and let them look at the insurance situation in Henry County. If I'm wrong, I'll stand right where you are and apologize, but I don't think I'm wrong. Matter of fact, I'll bet you money I'm right. Today, we got a mess. Our employees, our citizens, do not deserve manipulated commissions and manipulated benefits. It's wrong, and it should be looked at, or either the professional I brought in don't know what he's talking about, and he was one of the biggest insurance agents in the United States, and I don't believe he's crazy. As a matter of fact, I think there's a lawsuit right now on whistleblowers going on in Henry County, and one of the issues is about the same thing. Incompetent, no allegiance to the county, and it's all about commissions. I do it for nothing. What me and those two gentlemen right there do, we do for nothing. We don't want no money. We're willing to, we're willing to help Henry County. That's all it's about, ain't nothing about nothing else. You guys make from thirty to fifty thousand dollars. I don't begrudge that, but I do deserve for you to look into this mess called insurance in Henry County. And last thing I'm going to say is, the gentleman just walked out here on transportation, "Thank you, Ms. D., we don't need no more truck stops, we don't need no more rest areas, we don't need no more trucks," because, guys, they building one in Kingsmill right now, a warehouse, that's got twenty-eight thousand pallets in it, refrigerated warehouse, seventy acres. Your voters are not even going to be able to get home in three to five years, because trucks are going to be everywhere, and now, the state is backing this, the state's pushing this. This guy was, he's supported by the state. They don't care about you and I in Henry County, getting home in the afternoon, me having to hire teachers to stay at school so they can get the children home at night. They don't care about us, they care about what's good from Atlanta. I hope y'all will, I hope y'all will stop and take a breath of fresh air, and think about the voters. These people here don't make the kind of money. Most of you make more money sitting up there, working three or four days a month, than these people make, you know, in a year. That, you know, just think about them for a change. God bless you and what you do, I'm all for you, but I also expect you to do what you're morally and ethically correct to do, and if you don't, may God have mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. That's going to, well, I have two more, but I believe they were with the conditional use. Pamela Barlow, is she still here?
Yeah.
Okay. Charles Austin, are you still here? You can have five more minutes, if you State your name for the record, please.
My name's Frank Austin. I live at two seventy, two seventy-three Rocky Creek Road, Hampton. I wanted to address the conditional use appeal that's coming before you, from Mr. Drew McCray at two eighty-seven Rocky Creek Road. Much has been said about the traffic, much has been said about the noise. We've got people wandering around the neighborhood, on the other folks' property, all over the place, no one watching them. The other night, after a event, had an Uber driver in my driveway. It's quarter to eleven, blowing horn, flashing lights. I know who it was. When I went out to confront her, she says, "I'm an Uber driver." I said, "Well, I didn't call Uber." She left, which is probably a good thing she did, I wasn't in no mood to deal with it. A few minutes later, we have four people standing out beside the main road, waving at peoples as coming down the road. They don't know who's in the car, all they can see is the headlights coming at them. That's a serious safety concern from everybody's standpoint. You got the people just drinking and driving, we all know what that does. I think y'all have probably got my, should all have copies of the letter I wrote to you before this was scheduled the last time, so I'm not going to go into a lot of those points with you tonight. Mr. McCray has stated he's bringing money into this county, when it actually, truthfully, Drew McCray does not own a fifty-one percent majority in McCray's Cottonwood, it's, it is an LTD, an LLC corporation. He is only fifty percent owner. The other fifty percent of it is owned by a gentleman in Fayetteville, Mr. Michael D. Coring. Main offices for McCray's Cottonwood Estates, Fayetteville, Georgia, not Henry County. All of his permits and stuff he applies for, he applies for his, under his personal name, and not McCray's Cottonwood Estates. McCray's Cottonwood Estates has existed since April twenty-second of two thousand and fifteen, according to the filings with the state. He has been operating for this long. According to occupational tax, there is no occupational tax certificate for them. I can find no record at the county for any business license for this operation. It's been operating for two years. Alright, the last, he did apply for an occupational And as you can see, the only approval on it was from planning and zoning, the rest of the departments did not sign off on it, and it was only approved continuously based on the approval or denial of a conditional use permit, which he was turned down for. But, in our implicit wisdom, and I don't know why this happens or why it happened, somebody went ahead and issued him... Excuse me, my papers are all falling down here. An occupational tax certificate. Oops, excuse me, didn't get it right. For two months at the end of last year, ten twenty-four through twelve thirty-one of sixteen. I don't understand how this was issued, or why it was issued. Nobody will tell me.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Oh.
That will conclude public comment this time. Next, we have approval of minutes for the April fourth, two thousand and seventeen Board of Commissioner meetings. I call for a motion.
motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Wilson, second from Commissioner Clemmons. Any discussion? All in favor? Now, we have Chair and Commissioner comments. We'll start with Second District.
No comments.
Yep.
No comments, no comments.
I have no comments. Does County Attorney?
Nothing.
Any comments? Upcoming meetings, the following meetings will be had, May second at nine AM's regular Board of Commissioner meeting, May sixteenth, six-thirty PM's regular Board of Commissioner meeting. This time, I call for a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Got a motion for District Three.
Second.
Second from District One, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.